Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March 15, 2023 Lower Merion Board of Commissioners meeting. We have three meetings this evening: Administrative and Human Resources Committee; we have a Health Committee meeting and a Board of Commissioners meeting. I'm just going to wait one minute until we can get the doors closed. Who wouldn't mind being quiet so we can get started with our meetings? For anyone just joining us, please, please remain silent for now so we can get our meetings started. Thank you very much for your silence as we get started with our meetings, ladies and Good evening, everyone. We have three meetings this evening: Administrative and Human Resources Committee, Health Committee, and Board of Commissioners meeting. Before we start, please silence your cell phones. We have equipment for the hearing impaired, which is available if needed, and when the floor is open for public comment, comment will first be taken from those who are present in the room and then from those attending virtually. Please use the podium to my right over there and speak directly into the microphone so everyone can hear you. Feel free to adjust the microphone as necessary, and for those on Zoom, please raise your virtual hand if you'd like to speak during public comment opportunities. For all members of the public speaking, please introduce yourself prior to beginning your comments, and if you're going to make comments this evening and at all of our meetings, be aware that the Board and its appropriate staff will respond to comments and questions after all of the public comment is finished. So it's not typically a back and forth, it's we hear all of the public comment and then there are responses. So our first meeting, as I mentioned, is our Administrative and Human Resources Committee. I would like to talk to Commissioner Churchill to chair that meeting.
Thank you very much, Vice President Gavin. We have three items on the agenda this evening. The first is the appointment of a chief of department, our fire department, and let me first just put something in nomination and then can open it up for questions. Consider for recommendation to the Board of Commissioners confirmation of the appointment by township manager of James McCoy to the position of chief of department, fire chief officer effective March 13, 2023. Do I have a second? I have a second from Vice President Gavin. Thank you very much. First, I would appreciate some remarks by our township manager, Ernie, and who wants you?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. I have submitted to you a nomination of Jim McCoy to be appointed as chief fire officer slash chief of department. We are in the process of renaming the position in the fire code, so we are using those two instead of chief fire officer slash fire marshal. I've nominated Jimmy because he stepped in about a year ago as acting chief fire officer when Chaz McCoy left us, Chaz McGarvey left us, mixing two people together there. Anyway, when Chaz left us, Jimmy stepped in as acting. He's done an excellent job this past year. He's directed the department capably, he's advanced the fire department strategic plan, he's advanced some training and policies with the fire companies, and done a good job in every respect. Jimmy's got 18 years of experience as a deputy fire marshal with the township. He also has a long, many years of experience in fire service generally. He started in the fire service with the Marion Fire Company of Ardmore in 1985. He remains a member there. He was also an assistant chief at Ardmore from January of 91 until March of 2005 when he came to work for the township. Jimmy's done everything that's been asked for, and while we had initially started a recruitment last year, we were not overly impressed with the results and had never quite finished it when the fire chiefs came to us and said, "Let's put this off for a while and work on our strategic plan." We've made good progress this past year, and therefore it adds to my nomination of Jimmy as chief fire officer, chief of department for the Lower Merion Fire Department. Glad to ask for any questions, Commissioner.
Any other Commissioner comments? Yes.
Yeah, Commissioner Churchill, thank you very much. I could not endorse this more. I've had the pleasure of serving as the chair of our fire committee for about the past decade, and I've been able to watch what has taken place. When people around this area think of somebody who is in an acting managerial role and stepping up, they might think of the Phillies and them going to the World Series. Well, the performance of soon-to-be Chief McCoy, I hope, has been no less impressive. He has demonstrated the ability to really command control and the respect of each of the chiefs and the presidents that sit on the board of directors of Lower Merion Fire Service in just an exemplary way. As our managers indicated, we have moved forward with our strategic plan. We're in the doorstep of having memorandum of understanding with each of our fire houses, which is unique and is a true game saver, which will do nothing short of saving lives and property, and having James McCoy with the title be a chief of department, chief fire officer, whatever it is, at the top, which I think I hope you all will equally endorse. Thank you.
Any other Commissioner comments? Seeing none, are there any public comments? Jody, is there anyone online? No? Then I will call for a vote. All those in favor, raise your hand, say aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? Seems like it's unanimous. Thank you very much. Our second item is... Mr. McCoy, would you like to come and make some brief comments?
To the Commissioners and to the Township Manager, thank you for your opportunity. Being born into the fire service, starting in Lower Merion, going through my career in Lower Merion, working with the best men and women of the township, I couldn't be more proud to be the chief of department. Thank you for the great opportunity, and each day I'll promise to serve the best that I can, and we will make every resident and visitor happy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our second item is the appointments to the Human Relations Committees, and let me just, I'll just make a statement, get something before us. Consider for recommendation to the Board of Commissioners the retroactive reappointment of Felice Tilden to a three-year term. Such term will expire July 2025, and the appointment of Lois Mett and Jennifer Pryor from alternate to members of the Human Relations Commission for a three-year term. Such terms expire March 2026. Do I have a second? Thank you, Vice President Gavin. Do any of Commissioners have any comments on this? Ernie, did you have anything? No? Okay. Are there any public comments? Jody, anyone online? No. I will go for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand, say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Seems to go unanimously. Our last item, from time to time, old records are being destroyed. Most of them have been electronically stored, but this is just a paper keeping procedure. I will introduce the resolution. Whereas the Pennsylvania Local Government Records Committee approved a municipal record manual on December 16, 2008, and amended March 28, 2019, that set forth schedules and procedures for the disposition of municipal records, and whereas, in accordance to Act 428 of 1968, each individual act of disposition shall be approved by a resolution by the governing body of the municipality. Now therefore resolved that the Board of Commissioners, the Township of Lower Merion, in accordance with the above cited municipal record manual, hereby authorizes the disposition of the following public records. I have two pages here, but Commissioners, you have this in front of you. Are there any objections to these items being destroyed? No Commissioners comment on this? Any... Do I have public comment on this?
Yes.
Yes, good. Any public comment? Seeing none, go for the vote. All those...
Can I second it?
Oh, I thought you already had.
Sure.
Okay. Vice President Gavin, thank you for your second second. All those in favor, please raise your hand, say aye. Those opposed? Those abstention? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much, and that concludes the business of the Administration and Human Resource Committee.
Thank you, Commissioner Churchill, and we will now pass it on to Commissioner Macombe for our Health Committee meeting.
Thank you, Vice President Gavin. We have one item on the Health Advisory Council agenda. I'm going to make a motion, then we'll ask for any supporting comments. And whether we consider for recommendation the Board of Commissioners the retroactive reappointment of Eddie Breznot to a four-year term on the Health Advisory Council, such term to expire January 2027, the appointment of Leslie McClure from alternate to member for a four-year term, such term to expire March 2027, and the appointments of Janet Pleetwood and Elizabeth Lavelle as alternates. Do I have a second? Thank you, Commissioner McKeon. I will note that I'm on the Health Advisory Council. All these people are tremendously qualified and are contributors, and I would urge they be considered favorably. Any additional comments, Commissioner McKeon?
Thank you. Eddie Breznot has been on the HAC since 2009. He's an adjunct professor of epidemiology at Rutgers, so he's on for a reappointment, and we appreciate his long-term service. Liz Lavelle is a relatively new resident to the area. The HAC desperately needed a registered nurse. She works at a busy city hospital, Thomas Jefferson University. She's a case manager there, so that fills a great need that we have. And Professor Janet Pleetwood, longtime resident, she's a senior vice provost at Drexel, teaches public health courses, and has a public health background. So we're very happy that they all came out, and I look forward to them joining the HAC. And we had about a dozen highly qualified applicants who we interviewed. It's very humbling to turn away doctors and physicians for these positions as volunteer alternates on a township advisory board, but that just goes, I think is a testament to how committed people are to want to come out and help. So I'd say if you apply, please stay engaged, and please try again for another spot if you're interested. So, and with that, I'd like to welcome Elizabeth Lavelle and Janet Pleetwood to the HAC.
Right. Thank you, Commissioner McKeon. Anybody else? Commissioner Kramer?
I was chair of the Health Committee for the first two years of our pandemic, and I had the privilege of working closely with Dr. Eddie Breznot. He was, his expertise in the public health area was absolutely invaluable, and I can't recommend him highly enough for this reappointment.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Kramer. Any other Commissioner comments, questions? Any public comment on this? Jody, anybody online?
No.
Okay. Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand, signifying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, that passes unanimously, and Vice President Gavin, that concludes the business of the Health Advisory Council.
Thank you, Commissioner Macombe. We will now move to our Board of Commissioners meeting. So, the March 15, 2023 meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Lower Merion, please come to order, and all, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Thank you, and if our esteemed Madam Secretary would please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Stevenson will be late. Mr. Bernheim.
Present.
Mr. Churchill.
Here.
Mr. Courtney.
Here.
Mr. Gavin.
Present.
Mr. Grimes.
Here.
Ms. S. Kramer.
Here.
Ms. G. Kramer.
Here.
Mr. Macombe.
Here.
Mr. McKeon.
Here.
Ms. O'Neil.
Here.
Mr. Whalen.
Here.
Mr. Zellup.
Here.
Mr. Sinai.
(laughing).
Mr. President, we have a bar.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. I think we need to work on the volume on the Zoom.
Yeah, totally.
So our first matter of business is the approval of the minutes from the February 15 meeting, so I will make a motion to approve the minutes of a stated meeting of the Board of Commissioners held on February 15, 2023 as distributed. Thank you, Commissioner Bernheim, as I cannot second my own motion, which I normally do on that one, I appreciate your second. Any comment on the approval of the minutes from the Board of Commissioners? Seeing none. Any public comment? Seeing none. All those in favor, please raise your hand, signifying yes. Any opposed? Seeing none, that passes unanimously. I have a few announcements to make. The Board of Commissioners met in executive session on March 8 and earlier this evening regarding the following matters. One is disciplinary action and threatened litigation related to the January 8 car stop and arrest. Two is Workers Association collective bargaining agreement. Also, the Board will conduct committee meetings on Tuesday, April 4, instead of our typical Wednesday meeting, to accommodate those observing Passover. So if you plan on coming to the first meeting for committee meetings in April, please come on Tuesday and not Wednesday. On Friday, April 7, 2023, that's Good Friday, it's a legal holiday, the Township Administration Building and Libraries will be closed for business that day. Refues and recycling, however, will continue to be collected on that day. And additionally, a lot of people's favorite day of the year, cleanup weekend, is being held on Saturday, April 15, and Sunday, April 16, 2023, from 9:00 a.m. till 4:00 p.m. each day at the Township's Public Works Complex. Residents may dispose of their refus and recycling free of charge. Proof of residency is required. Recycling must be separated from refus, and no household hazardous waste will be accepted. That takes us to our next section, which is public privilege of the floor. As you'll see, there are two sections now coming up where the public has an opportunity to make comments. The first is public privilege of the floor. This is the section where members of the public may address the Board on any non-agenda items or any other public matters in which the township has jurisdiction or authority. Please state your name prior to addressing the Board, and keep comments to three minutes or less. Our Township Secretary has a little indicator for three minutes. If there's a group of people in attendance who are speaking on the same topic, we ask that a spokesperson be selected to address the Board and that they keep their comments to five minutes or less. Please note that comments will first be taken from those present in the room and then from those attending virtually, and use the podium again to my right and speak directly into the microphone. For those on Zoom, please raise your virtual hand so that we know that you'd like to speak during the opportunity. And again, if you're making comments, please don't expect the Board to respond immediately. Once all of the public, the comments are made, that's when the Board will have the opportunity to respond. So if anyone in the room would like to make comment, please approach the podium, introduce yourself, and we will begin public privilege. Thank you.
My name is John S. Yusevitz. I'm the president of the FOP, Paternal Order of Police Lodge 28. I represent the Lower Merion Township Police Officers and Lower Borough Police Officers. I first wanted to like to thank Commissioners Zellup for speaking out against the actions taken by the Board last Wednesday. I'd also like to thank Commissioners Macombe, Stevenson, and Churchill for standing with Commissioners Zellup and not succumbing to the pressure around them. I am not here to make any demands, but to advise the citizens, the act of, I'm sorry, excuse me, I'm not here to make any demands, but to advise the citizens that have elected you, the state of their police department, after the actions taken by your Board. I'm here tonight to tell the citizens we serve that your Lower Merion Township Police Officers are now afraid to make decisions while working in their beloved profession and faithfully serving the citizens and visitors of this first-class township for fear of being punished or worse. I was present during the meeting when this Board took excessive and irrational disciplinary action against our brother officer. My first reaction was to speak out against it then and there, but I was afraid. I was not afraid for myself or how it would be viewed by others. I was afraid that my initial disappointment, dismay, and anger would not convey the proper message. My other Board members advised me not to speak that evening based on fear. Fear is a human factor. Most police encounters in this country surround the same human emotions. We, the officer, are fearful that we may be seriously hurt or injured during the encounter. We are fearful that we may have to use force or even take a life in order to protect ourselves or others. We are fearful that we won't make the right decision at a split-second notice. We are fearful that our actions will not be looked at at the time of the incident by only those sitting in a warm, safe room and time to contemplate one's actions. We are fearful that we'll end up on social media and crucified by those that have never walked in our shoes. The person that's being encountered, they are fearful of being injured or killed during the incident. They are fearful of why they are being stopped or encountered. They are fearful that they may be punished for crimes they did or did not commit. They are fearful that they may be judged by a person that has not walked in their shoes. They are fearful that they may be judged by the color of their skin and not the content of their character. Courage is the ability to act properly even when faced with fear. On January 28, 2023, a veteran Lower Merion Township officer was conducting a self-initiated enforcement action against an offender that was operating a vehicle with numerous vehicle code violations. The offender attempt, I'm sorry, the officer attempted to make a lawful stop. Instead, the offender chose to flee the scene. Once the officer stopped the vehicle, lawful commands were given to that offender for which they did not follow. The offender was advised that they were under arrest, for which they resisted verbally and physically. After being arrested, the offender was also found to be in possession of a controlled substance. The offender was charged with three misdemeanor violations of the Pennsylvania Crimes and Vehicle Code, fleeing and eluding a police officer, resisting arrest, and drug possession. Additionally, the offender was cited with numerous traffic citations, including driving while under a suspended license. The offender was represented by a private attorney at a preliminary hearing in district court and was given proper due process. All of the charges were sustained by the judge to proceed to the Court of Common Peace. The officer and the FOP fully cooperated with this extensive two-month investigation into the incident. The officer was open and honest about what could have been done better on the traffic stop, including the policy violations. Our command staff, with approximately 150 years of combined experience, found no evidence of bias, no evidence of racism, no evidence of excessive force during the incident. Command staff did cite policy violations of the body camera, pursuit, and de-escalation policies. The officer took full responsibility for these violations and offered no excuses. Following the full investigation, the command staff recommended a one-day, eight-hour suspension without pay. This Board decided to do 10 times that. The 10-day, 80-hour suspension of our brother and colleague is irrational and punitive. The fact that members of this Board hinted for his termination is beyond reason and understanding. Every single officer must now immediately evaluate their every move while on duty and also their continued employment with this township. We are afraid to properly and proactively do our job because of your Board's decision. The Commissioner also spoke about previous FOP actions not related to this incident while you were, as those included in your decision to present an irrational punishment disappeared to be punitive. For this, we're afraid. Those statements appeared to be anti-labor and union busting. It is clear the Lower Merion Township Police Officers have no support from selected officials. A majority of the Board sent a clear and direct message that the officers who protect and serve this community are now subject to their political whims, which they are driven in large part by social media. Lower Merion Police Officers can no longer expect due process in discipline matters regardless of the situation. We now share the same fate and the ugly reality as our brothers and sisters in Seattle, Portland, Chicago, Austin, New York, and Philadelphia. As officers, we must now evaluate if our routine lawful actions may cause a viral social media post, which may change the course of our lives and the families we support. The majority of the members have told me that they want to be proactive in this community like their families live here, but they are fearful that any lawful action on duty may lead to another irrational and punitive disciplinary act. The FOP will vigorously oppose the 10-day suspension for its grievance and arbitration process. The officers in this community worked through a global pandemic and held the line during violent civil unrest when the Philadelphia side of City Avenue was pillaged and plundered, and this is how we are repaid. We were not afraid to take police action during those unprecedented times, but now officers may make decisions based on fear because of this Board's actions and may not be able to hold that line again. Lower Merion Police protect a township that is borders against Philadelphia, which has seen an explosion of crime and lawlessness that your officers encounter on every shift. Armed violent criminals are on the streets of this very community. We have never and never will fear the criminals, but we are now afraid to do our job because of your Board's actions. I am truly honored to represent some of the finest police officers in this profession who need to be and deserve to be supported by this Board and by management. There is still time to fix this injustice. It is my hope the Commissioners will open a healthy and honest dialogue with the FOP to show that they do support the men and women of the Lower Merion Township Police Department. We stand here tonight, afraid, unsupported, understaffed, but united. I want to thank all of those that have came out to support our officers this evening. We need that support because the majority of this elected Board does not support us. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joe Regan. I'm president of the Pennsylvania Fraternal Order of Police. I proudly served the Lower Merion Police Department for 28 years, retiring in 2011. During my active service, I was elected to several leadership positions with Lower Merion Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 28, in addition to four terms as president. As a result, I have considerable experience with regard to labor relations throughout the Commonwealth and in particular in Lower Merion Township. I can state that with that exception, everyone in the law enforcement community is appalled by the action taken by Lower Merion Township in this matter. Across the state, our members, their families, friends, and their communities support them and are united in their concern about what has transpired here in Lower Merion. You can see that tonight with all the support of everyone standing here from the And you can see that tonight with all the support of everyone standing here from departments throughout the area. Lower Marion Officers have my full support and that of the organization that I lead. We will assist them in every way possible. We anticipate that justice will prevail and the officer will be relieved of the excessive punishment which this Board has applied. Lower Marion's leaders can and must do a better job if they expect to regain the trust and selfless dedication of their police officers. Thank you.
I'm Brian Reese Turner. I'm the president of the Main Line Branch of the NAACP. I'm here this evening just to counter what you just heard. What we're calling for and what we've been calling for and what we're appreciative of is the work that the Board has done. We were here last week when we heard the appalling recommendation from the Superintendent of Police. While it was not what we asked for, we did hear 80 hours unpaid, and we thought that was a suitable punishment for the officer that created the incident. What we're asking for is accountability. I don't know where in America any type of employee can come to their boss and put on this type of show. It's not appropriate, and that's why we're calling for more accountability oversight for our police department. Who's running the show here? Is it the Board of Commissioners or is it the police department? You guys have the oversight of that department, and you guys have to lay down the law when it's necessary. Lower Marion is supposed to be a first-class township, and we expect first-class police officers. When they fail to uphold the responsibilities of the job, they need to be held accountable. If two weeks is not enough time, I mean, if two weeks is too much time, I don't know what they expect from it. I keep hearing the word "fear." Black and brown people in this country have been fearful for over 400 years. This is where we live. This is where we have a right to exist in, and all we're calling for is accountability. There was a woman that was tased. She's not an offender. She's a woman. She's a mother. She's a sister. She has a family. She has a name, but she's a woman. She's a black woman, and she has rights, and her rights were violated on January 8th. And our hope is that you guys continue to uphold the punishment that you have put down. It's important for accountability's sake that police officers in this township are held accountable when they violate policy, and the township needs to tighten up those policies to make it clear to officers in terms of what the limits of their things are. If fear was a factor in the situation, that's totally understandable, but the officer, when we watched that video, was out of control. He was acting out of anger. He wasn't acting in a controlled state, and it was unprofessional. And when you watch that video, we all watched that video. That's what we saw, and the appropriate punishment really would be termination, but two weeks, I feel, is light. Two weeks is light, but if that's what the Board wants to do, that's totally what we'll support at this point in time. But we call for accountability for any officer that's not following the rules and who's violating people's civil rights. That's plain and simple. Thank you for your time.
My name is Rich Kramer. I'm a 27-year resident of the Township. Also worked for the police department from, I guess, 1984 to 2011. During my career, I served as a training officer for the department. I'm a certified use-of-force instructor, certified tactical instructor. I also want to tell you that I had a chance to view the incident, and I can tell you right now, I just thought of something. When you brought this meaning to order, you gave a set of instructions, didn't you, Mr. Vice President?
Yes.
You gave us, because you expect the citizens here to act accordingly, correct?
Correct.
Because if they don't, can you conduct business?
Sir, with all due respect, we're not going to be doing this back and forth.
Exactly. Exactly. That's my point. There's a time and place. If somebody wants to argue with a police officer, it's not on the street. There's a time and place for that. So I can tell you right now, I viewed what transpired. So, in addition, let me present you a quick scenario. You have a citizen comes in, makes a presentation. Can any of you on the Board determine whether that person is armed? Do you know what their true intentions are? Anyone?
Sir, again, we're not doing a back and forth here.
Okay, all right. Well, a simple nod. I'm not looking for, you know, any type of going, you know, back and forth. So if there is an issue and somebody does become uncooperative, becomes unruly, do you have a little button up there you can push to send for the police? Any of you trained, and these are rhetorical questions, are any of you trained to deal with unruly people, uncooperative, or when you push that button, you all head for the door and wait for the police to show up to handle the situation because you're not trained to do it? You don't have the understanding. None of you have formal police training, but yet you stand in judgment? I can tell you right now, the messages that you're sending, first of all, you see the command staff here? Basically, when you changed their discipline from one to 10 days, you basically said to them, "We don't trust you, and we don't believe you have the right mindset to conduct this business." That's unprecedented for you to change a discipline recommendation by the command staff here in the township. It's unbelievable. You're also, you know, you all talk about the thin blue line, and you're worried about all the cops staying together and stuff like, you think your actions promote that? They're now afraid to say anything. We encourage the officers, when I was president, we encouraged them to come forward and to expose any bad behavior, because we didn't want to work with those officers. I'm a township resident. My mom lives here. My sister lives here. I don't want those officers. I want well-adjusted, well-trained officers. But if you start with this nonsense that you're pulling right now, you are going to promote a tight-lipped group that will not report. You have a command staff now is wondering whether the Commissioners actually backed them. I don't know where you're going with this, but I'm telling you, you acted inappropriately. A lot of times, the one thing I learned, being an instructor and working out on the street, don't think emotionally, think intellectually, because if you let your emotions be driven by this subject, you're going to make bad decisions. Thank you.
First, I just want to say, electric car chargers, we need more of them. Other townships have free ones, so let's do it. Second, with regards to what a lot of people are here to speak about, you know, there's a sign there that says "trial by social media," and the last time I spoke here, I mentioned that the representative, our elected representative, already made a Facebook post condemning the police department's actions. This was a week or two before the police released their video. So that's what we're dealing with here, where there's three sides every story. Nobody wants to hear the other side, and people have this binary where it's black or white, but it's not. We have two things here. One, had the woman pulled over right away, we would not be here today. She did pull over and then left. What does that tell the police officer? And two, yes, had the police officer de-escalated the situation, maybe this wouldn't be here. But it's not a race issue because we know for a fact, based on the video, that the first time the police officer knew the race of the occupant was when he got out of his vehicle to approach the car. Right? So what we have here is the Commissioners listening to a mob and take a one-day suspension to 10. Now, the police department said that there were violations that the police officer, there were policies that the police officer violated. One was the body camera, and two was the de-escalation. Tasing wasn't mentioned. Taser was appropriate. So you have a 10-day suspension for a body cam violation and a not acting inappropriate. So what, how long does each one work? You know, because the police officers should know, because there are occasions where the body camera may not be functioning properly. So are they up for, is that a five-day suspension, a 10-day? Like, where exactly is it? You know, and I just also want to ask, I know a few months ago, maybe, and, you know, the police department or the police officers had a vote of no confidence in the superintendent and the leadership. What has the Board of Commissioners done to that? You know, we have, you know, every so often you have a vacancy to hire someone in the Lower Marion Police Department, but why is there a vacancy in the Lower Marion Police Department? You always say that we're a first-class township. A first-class township should have people lining up waiting to join the Lower Marion Police Department. Is the pay of the Lower Marion Police Department on par with the rest? Are the amenities on par with the rest? Are the fringe benefits on par with the rest? You know, we have, I've dealt with the police department here, both as someone who's being pulled over, both as someone who's watching them, and, you know, this is just to behavior. When I was pulled over, they had to actually ask for backup due to the situation, and while I was talking to the police officer, the number-one reason, or not, maybe not number one, so I don't want to put them on the spot, but one of the major reasons that determine whether you're going to get a ticket or a warning is "don't act like a jerk." That's really it. It has nothing... The police officer has discretion, just like an attorney has discretion, a prosecutor has discretion. Right? People need to know, and it's on the Lower Marion's website, where "what to do when pulled over by a cop." And, you know, they mentioned it's not the right time to argue when you're pulled over. Have you ever seen a video? Have you ever seen a court case? Have you ever seen anything where a person argues with a cop on scene and wins? It doesn't happen. People need to know, when you're pulled over by a cop, take it, don't say anything, fight them in court. I'm sure the cops don't mind going to court. They get paid for it. So, well, don't argue when you're pulled over, you know, and if you do this 10-day suspension, you will be sending a message to the police department. You know, like I said, Philadelphia, Chicago, New York, Baltimore, Cleveland, this is what happens when the management does not support the police department. You know, you always say "first-class township." You cannot have a first-class township without a first-class public safety. Thank you.
My name is Mark Klotzbach. I reside on Millbank Road in Bryn Mawr. The incident that occurred on January 8th, 2023, is a significant issue for our community and everyone that was directly involved in the incident. Mistakes were made and violation, and a violation of policy occurred. However, after reading the comprehensive police incident report and watching the camera footage, I believe that the 80-hour suspension was too severe relative to the violation that occurred and the non-use of best practices. We, as a community, need to ensure that this incident does not spiral into something that it is not, while being keenly aware of the potential of a deterioration of morale within the police ranks and a potential for the negative implications of recruitment and retention within the police ranks and administrative staff. I would ultimately like to commend the Lower Marion Police Department and the Board of Commissioners for your transparency and review of this incident. Thank you.
My name is Reverend Glenn Shepherd. I'm the pastor of Bethel African Methodist Episcopal Church in Bryn Mawr. I arrived here in December 2019, during, right before the pandemic, and one of the things that we had to do was to reach out to everyone in the community, and we did that, and we reached out to the Superintendent of Police. And I'd just like to, because we need to dispel some of the rumors or lies about people not supporting the police. We do support the police. We just deal with behavior, and behavior and discipline are the two things that we're about tonight. At least, that's what I came to hear. But this is the letter I wrote to Superintendent Michael J. McGrath on 15 April 2020. Second paragraph, "I would like to request that your staff and officers be notified that we are praying for your strength in physical and mental, physically and mentally. We know that they are on the front lines, supporting the community with their lifesaving skills. Their dedication to duty under your leadership is commended and greatly appreciated." Now, I only have been here a few months. I didn't, I don't know the history about Lower Marion, but I spend six, almost six days a week here, pleasant in some cases, but the issue for me right now, there's a lot of pain in this township. I read the, and let me say, I want to make sure, because allegedly, because I don't know if the FOP president wrote this or not, because, you know, technology is strange these days, but it was a letter that was addressing certain issues that deal with the Township Commissioners as well. They raised issues about Mississippi, Kentucky, Tennessee, and Michigan, Louisiana, and Tennessee, and all the other places were not mentioned, but there is issues. There's pain in this area, pain on the police department, pain in the community, pain here. Now, I don't know what the rules and the standards are for discipline. I don't know. I would like, I think the rabbi said something about, we shouldn't know if a body cam wasn't on one time, counseling for him. If it's two times, a suspension of one day, three times, you know, five-day suspension, and the fourth time, you know, termination. I don't know, but there should be some clear guidelines for all of us to understand. Now, one thing is, we're about community, community, loving each other and caring for each other, and right now, it's a lot of pain, a lot of pain. Now, like I said, I do believe that this Commission has legal guidance when they made that decision about 10 days. I think they're wise and intelligent people. They just did it arbitrarily, so I hope they had legal. But at the end of the day, like I said, my concern right now is that I hear a lot of pain, and with that, folk, I want them to go home. I've got police officers in my family, too. And the one thing that we talk about is about good policing, good community relations, and good political leadership. That's what we agree on. That's how we get community. Right now, we don't. I don't know what we have to do, but I think this is a beginning stage for all of us, to sit down, to do what we need to do, but at the end of the day, like I said, we're dealing with two things, behavior and discipline. And I took the weekend to read some of the information that's on the websites. It's a voluminous document, but I did read it, and it has certain things, and Officer Murphy has a right, thank God we have a democracy, to appeal. Five days after he was here, we made the decision here at this Board on the 8th, he should have had a certified letter sent to him so that he could know what to do, and like I said, I thank God for a democracy. He can stand here with all the brothers and sisters here as well to support. We support police, but I, like I said, I grew up in Philadelphia, and Philadelphia's got issues, but the issue is all of the communities have issues, and right now, we got an issue with pain, and my prayer is that something real good comes out of this, because it's not a black and white issue at this moment, and I pray that it never gets to that point. So I thank you for your time, and I hope that we all can come together somewhere along the line and do the right thing.
My name is Sandra Thompson. I happen to be an attorney as well as president of NAACP Pennsylvania State Conference, and so we are standing, we are watching, and we are standing here with the Main Line Branch and President Reese Turner. So a few things that I think is extremely important, this happens across city councils and township boroughs, and every time they're dealing with police, whether it's contracts, whether it's attempting to discipline and attempting to get someone to follow the policies, because one of the things I did hear is there were mistakes made. The other thing that I did hear is there were violations of policy. So I'd also heard that in any other job, you get disciplined, and you have to follow that discipline. So even the police department should not be above that. So even the police department should not be above that. And what happens often in city councils and township boroughs all across the state and the nation is basically, you get held hostage. You get held hostage by all the groups and the people and the family and the contracts and the FOP that come up and say, almost veiled threats, "We'll walk out, we won't police, we won't police the neighborhoods, we won't do our jobs unless you do what we say." So there was a veiled threat. I heard something as far as comply. A police officer approaches you, you do what he says and you comply. You shut your mouth right away, and then you won't get tased, then you won't fear death. Well, we don't have a totalitarian government, because that is what that says under that form of government. So we do have a right to question police, we do have a right to ask, "Am I free to go, or am I being detained?" We do have a right to say no to searches. And guess what? We have a right that if we are a single woman in a vehicle, being stopped on the road, then we have a right to drive to the nearest safe place. So that should not be aggravating to a police officer. That should not be considered disobedience or fleeing. And many black and brown people have lost their lives for just exercising that right. Many black and brown people have been tased, been choked for exercising those rights. Those are the things that we are here to speak out against. Not good policing, but policing that puts us in fear of the mere contact, the mere aggravation thought by the officer. Because if we don't comply in the exact same way that they think that we should, then we fear death, we fear abuse, we fear excessive charges. So public safety is also to the public that you serve, not just these officers, it's to the 7.1% also of the minority communities. And part of that relationship building is showing that you're willing to protect them, too. And if police officers are concerned about being held accountable, then they should think twice when they're on the street. Am I charging correctly? Am I profiling? Am I overcharging? Am I acting in anger? So they should think twice about what's their motivation. And that also only takes seconds for them to self-evaluate. And that is not wrong, and that's what discipline encourages them to do. And that's the difference between eight hours and 80 hours. Because a police officer can tase, shut off his body camera, or do anything else, and just lose a day pay, they'll keep doing it. So you send a message of what not to do, what policies not to violate, by giving the 80 hours versus eight hours. And then we can also then work on representation, because all the officers and family of officers that I mostly see standing up don't represent the entirety of the community. And then they also may be pressured by that blue line. But it is not about blue, it's not about black. It is about community as a whole and everybody feeling safe, not just the people with the legal gun. Thank you.
I live in this community. I want to commend the commissioners for at least extending his suspension. I don't think that officer needs to be on the street right now. You know, I personally think he shouldn't be an officer, but I don't think he needs to be on the street. No one has talked about training about these officers, and they need to have ongoing training. He approached that car angrily. He was angry because she didn't pull over when he wanted her to. I drive that street every day to work, and there's really no place to safely pull over. And if I'm a woman, I'm not going to pull over with an officer until I can get into a public domain where I feel safe. You as the commissioners have a job to govern everybody in this community, not just your own private little pockets of where you live, and you support your own community, but everybody in the community. And I don't hear anything about the training, or the goals, or objectives tied into his evaluation. Ernie McNilly needs to do, work with that department and set up some kind of plan so that this does not continue to happen. There is a pattern of behavior from officers in this community that stop black and brown people all the time. Yes, yes, go back and look.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen, this is not a debate.
Yes, there is a pattern. And when you guys spoke, we all sat very quietly, and we listened to everything that you had to say. We didn't interrupt, we didn't call out, and we didn't do anything.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Speak to us.
Ms. Blunt, please refer to the board, not to the crowd.
Yes, so I just want to commend you. I really think that he's not safe on the street. I want to hear more about what you're going to do moving forward so that this doesn't happen. I want to hear about training that they really need to be responsible for. I think that there needs to be something in place, objectives, or things that they need to meet, especially for this officer, if you're going to put him back on the street. And there needs to be some accountability. There has to be, or someone is going to get hurt. They want to get home safely to their families, and we want to get home safely to our families. And the only way we're going to do this and figure this out is if we work together, and he has to be punished for his behavior. Because if he would have went up to that car in a whole different manner, in a whole different way, I don't think we would have been here today. But he escalated, and because he was escalating, she got escalated. And if she, if he would have remembered the training that he's, this young guy said that he does, then none of this would have happened. He threw that all out of the window because he got angry, because she didn't do what he wanted her to do right then and there. And you can't operate like that, or someone's going to be hurt. Somebody's not coming home, and it's either going to be one of them, or it's going to be us.
What it means.
Is there any other public comment in the room? Public comment's going to be from the podium.
Good evening. I'm Roxanna Wright. I want to say that I am standing, or we are standing, Mainline Power is standing with the NAACP. I'm a member of both organizations. It is very important, it would have been nice if he had apologized. Since that did not happen, all we're going to, excuse me. What is important is the policies. And I think you received a letter from the Power Mainline. If you would please look at that, we will be meeting. We are concerned about policy. If we can get that straight, I think that would really be very, very helpful. And we thank you for all that you're doing. Thank you.
Please come to the podium if you have public comment.
This is on a different topic, that's okay.
I just want to jump in here. Before we talk about our topic, I put together a little presentation. It's purely images for the board. I'm happy to send it via PowerPoint after, if you want to distribute it or post it on the Township's website, this might just help you with kind of the visual of our presentation for everybody who are involved.
Sir, again, we're addressing the board, we're not addressing the people in the room. If you have something to hand to the board, you can give it to our Township Secretary.
All right, I'll make this as quick and painless as I can, a different topic, of course, all important. My name is Danielle Ingerman-Waltzer. I'm a mom. I am a Lower Marion resident. I have been a Lower Marion resident since I was five years old. I've recently moved back with my three children and my husband. I'm here tonight to hopefully get in your minds the idea of updating our recreation in Lower Marion Township, specifically at Gladwin Playground. I moved out here about two years ago, and I grew up out here, like I said. I've seen most of the playgrounds in the area since I was a kid, and most of them have not changed. As the pandemic has shifted, most people, especially with young children and their ability to get their energies out, the children have after-school activities and such, there has definitely been a strain on options for kids in general. I think a lot of businesses shut down, it doesn't take a genius to know that. But I think when I moved out here, the thing that struck me the most was the conditions of some of the playgrounds, most specifically Gladwin Playground. Like I said, I grew up out here, I like being here, I've been a Lower Marion resident most of my life. Now, moving back, seeing that things have essentially remained unchanged for the most part, I took it upon myself, with three kids, five, four, and one years old, to try to make a change, make a positive change. Most notably, my three-and-a-half-year-old has extensive special needs and has ankle braces. It's very difficult for her to walk, and some of the surfaces at the playgrounds, specifically, I'll focus on Gladwin Playground, like the woodchips, et cetera, the conditions of the sidewalks and the roads are not accessible, and they're not safe for someone like her that has any kind of disabilities. Living, again, in Lower Marion Township my whole life, I definitely did not foresee this would be an issue.
So, thank you. Again, my name's Aaron. So as Danielle mentioned, we have three children, our middle daughter.
Sir, if you could introduce your name fully.
My name's Aaron Waltzer.
Thank you.
Thank you. We reside in Gladwin. As Danielle mentioned, our middle daughter, Ivy, she has kind of global developmental delays and special needs. And really how this came about for us living in Gladwin is that when we frequented Gladwin Playground, we realized that there were some issues which caused me to go to other playgrounds as well as other municipalities. And in this presentation, you see Radnor Township and Brew Mall. We go to Wayne and Villanova, and I think it's really kind of easy for everybody here to see that we're lacking some of those basic standard sensory, physical, developmental, you know, components of the playground. And we've had some meetings already with township commissioners and stakeholders, both via phone and at the playground to, you know, address this. And we think that there is, you know, kind of global support for such, you know, overhaul and project, and we're really here to kind of make the case and let it be known that, you know, we view this as a symbiotic relationship, commissioners and residents to kind of work together to promote, not only for our daughter, but for all other parents, children, nieces, nephews in the community, you know, a better amenity for everybody.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to talk on something that does not relate to this major issue, so I'm a little bit embarrassed. My name is Ron Hoxter, and this is my wife Debbie. We're from Wynwood in Indian Creek area. Friday, March 3rd, we were headed east on Lancaster Avenue, I was driving, Debbie was in the passenger seat. We waited at a green light at Remington and Lancaster, and we took a left on Remington. There are no cars visible, other than a car heading west, making a left turn on Remington towards the synagogue. We were hit, before we knew it, by a 2014 Tesla S on the passenger side of my Infiniti Q50, slamming my wife violently. The blow knocked us off the side of the road and into the north side of Lancaster Avenue. In my estimation, the car traveling was going 60 miles an hour plus in that 40 mile-an-hour zone from Lancaster, from Lankinow Hospital towards that light. My car was totaled, the door was pushed at least four inches into the interior of the vehicle. Both my wife and I had minor concussions, I injured my left hip, my wife was generally shaken up, especially after seeing the car and recognizing what could have happened to her. The Tesla had damage to the right wheel and axle, from what I could see. Our insurance company, Progressive, agrees that the car that hit us was going 60 miles an hour. For the reason, the reason we are here is that this is a frequent corner of her accidents. We've been living here 36 years, we've lived in Wynwood. 15 years ago, I think, when Kessler was on the, committed on the Township Board, a light was put on for a left turn signal. It was taken out, I think about 10 years ago. I spoke to Liz Rogan, who was then the head of the Township Board, and she told me it was worse when they had the light than when we didn't have the light. My understanding from talking to police is that this is one of the worst corners for accidents in the township. Most of my friends don't make that left turn anymore, it's just considered too dangerous. Nine, 10 friends I've spoken to, none of us will take that turn. The uphill approach from the east to the west, combined with the cars making that left turn to the, towards the synagogue, makes it impossible to see a car coming towards you. In addition, Lancaster Hospital up that hill is a straight run, and I believe many of the cars are not going at 40 miles per hour. My understanding is that PennDOT is evaluating adding a lane or two lanes, turn signals. It's been doing that, what I was told by some police, since 2019. This would be, of course, a solution to the problem. But in the meantime, somebody may get killed. I'm concerned. Why not put in turn signals with a red light for approaching from the other direction? We also need a means of slowing down these cars that are coming up from Lankinow Hospital towards the west. Or install a camera to catch these speeders. Let's do something to prevent a tragic accident. My wife and I, we feel are lucky to be alive, and thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
My name's John Samlow, live in Belmont Hills. I really wasn't going to say anything tonight. I came in here to support the Lower Marion Police Department. I'm born and raised in Lower Marion. And I'm really looking at this board, the commissioners, and I'm really feeling disappointed in what you're doing to this officer. One thing that I learned from my parents when I turned 16, when I got my driver's license, was if and when you are ever pulled over, you are to obey what that officer tells you to do. If he tells you to stay in the car, you stay in the car. If he tells you to get out of the car, you get out of the car. Once again, I'm finding out, from watching the news, watching social media, here we are, again, taking someone who was driving a car that was, had drugs in it, the tint was too bad, and suspended license, and we were taking, we are, again, taking the onus that this person was breaking the law. And instead of taking that person that broke the law, we're taking everything, and we're not penalizing them, we're penalizing the police officer who was doing his job. Nothing more, nothing less. And that's all I have to say. Remember, this officer was doing the job that you hired him to do.
My name's Joe Braun, I'm media past president and vice president of Lodge 28. I'd like to say that what we're talking about here tonight is policy. Lower Marion has had the strictest, and I think we can all agree here, as far as, you know, our officers, our members, and the other presidents and vice presidents and members of other lodges that are here, we have an extremely strict policy here, and we are held to high standards. are held to high standards. And we accept that. We love it. That's what makes us proud to do what we do. But for someone to be suspended a day, that's a big deal. It's a lot of money off that officer's table. It doesn't happen very often because we held, hold ourselves to those high standards. When you want to give us 10 days for an officer, we have no problem with someone that wants to go to a safe place. We love it. That makes them feel safe, makes us feel safe. Everybody's good. But the law and the legislators of this state are the ones that handed down the laws that say you have to give us your ID and if we ask you out of the car, you have to get out of the car. That's not policy, that's law. So when an officer is, does that and they don't want to comply, there's issues. If you want to give this guy 10 days, who is an outstanding police officer, he's been a police officer for a long time, he's got a very good track record, his evaluations are off the charts, you want to give him 10 days, that is excessive, it's reckless, and it sends a bad message to everyone. So that's what we're talking about. We're talking about policies, not the law. He didn't violate the law. He violated policies. He never lied about them. He never said that he was above it. He accepted it. He accepted his punishment. And then it got turned around on its head and that's what we're here to defend. Those 10 days send a very bad message to your officers. That's what we're defending. Thank you very much. God bless your family, sir. Your family that are officers, God bless them. God bless all the cops that are here. Thank you very much.
Is there any other public comments in the room? Yep.
My name, excuse me. My name is Steve Solera. I'm a retired sergeant from Lower Marion Township Police Department. Steve Solera, Ernie. I just want all the board to realize what a dangerous job we have. These officers, they have lost your trust. By this decision, they have lost your trust. These officers need to know you have their back. I created a self-inflicted car stop one day for a traffic violation that resulted in three guns being taken off the street, a bloody baseball bat. These guns, by the way, had obliterated serial numbers. The guns were wrapped in plastic. These were two bad individuals that I took off the streets in Lower Marion Township. Now, unless you rescind this 10-day suspension, these officers aren't going to create those self-inflicted stops to get these bad people off the street. They are not going to, you want, you want to create a border that extends Philadelphia? By all means, keep this 10-day suspension going because that's where it's headed. If, if we are going to be scrutinized to this extent for doing our job, you're not only showing that you don't have the back of the officers, you don't have the back of the command staff that recommended this one-day suspension. This command staff has a lot of experience, more experience in police work than any of you. So if you want to create this environment where it's okay for people to run from the police and endanger the lives of your pedestrians because they're running from the police and have crime run rampant as, as you see what's going on in the streets of Philadelphia, by all means, keep this 10-day suspension going. But if you want to put your foot down as some of the commissioners try to talk some sense into you, then do what's right. Do the right thing because I'm telling you, in my 30 years here with the township, I've never seen this, never. And it's not good. It's not good. And you owe it to your residents of the township to do the right thing. Thank you.
Brian Gordon, resident of Marion Station, former Lower Marion Township Commissioner, representing the 12th Ward Marion, member of the NAACP. I'm not sure where to begin. I only, I know I only have three minutes, so I'll try to keep it super brief. What officers, officers in this township face serious threats, we know that. We know that, at least Superintendent McGrath told me years ago that about 50 officers a year are shot in traffic stops and that's a horror. We know that tinted windows are a danger, which brings me to this traffic stop. We know that when the woman on the traffic stop raised her window, it created a threat level to the officer. Nevertheless, nevertheless, what we ask you to do is to follow the law, the constitutional law, and to follow really the higher standard of Lower Marion. What if the Constitution says? It says that a police officer can use as much force as is necessary to get someone under control, but no more. If you don't need to use the force, you don't use it. If you, if the person's under control, such as if someone has collapsed to the ground, you stop. Not one more kick, not one more punch, not one more taser, you have to stop. We ask you as officers to do that. And what we do in this township, and this is really partly from the officers who have testified or are training, is we have a use-of-force continuum to structure that decision-making so that you step up the use of force from your presence to verbal commands to using, to selecting any number of weapons that you have on your waist belt. And we ask you to use the appropriate force here. In this instance, on the other side of the coin, aside from the bad behavior of this suspect which made things worse, that's what we're looking at and we have to balance these things. We're looking at a woman who was stopped for tailgating, not for armed robbery. We're looking for someone who was followed by an arresting officer. Initially, she had no place to pull over safely and then drove to a parking lot, to a dead-end parking space with her flashers on the entire time. She was not a fleeing felon. We are looking at a woman who was detained, who was frightened or scared and asked for a supervisor or a white shirt seven times. The officer said, "You don't have that right." That's true. That is true. However, we're asking the officer to use common sense. As Rich Kramer just said, when you're ruled by your emotions, you'll make bad decisions. The officer here, with the arresting officer, had opportunities to de-escalate the situation and failed to act. One of those opportunities was waiting for backup. By not waiting for backup was a violation of the rules. If he waited for backup, it would naturally have created the situation for de-escalation. The arresting officer lost his temper and was unable to cool down. The prospect of a frightened or uncooperative suspect following well-publicized deaths of black detainees, this is the most controversial thing I'm going to say, perhaps should have been anticipated by the police. What do we do the next time? How do we handle that? The answer is, you use the force you need to use and then you have to stop. You use a use-of-force continuum. The separate use of a taser outside the vehicle, we talked about that. The arresting officer did not sync his body camera, as you know, and the officer did not wait for backup. So the last question is, where do we go from here? Because we have two traumatized communities. We have African-Americans who are traumatized by watching what has happened to their kin and even in the most recent Memphis situation with black officers, not a race issue, okay? You have someone who was complying as best as he could. The only thing he wouldn't do is put his neck on the ground like George Floyd and he was beaten to death. So I'm not comparing that situation to this. What I'm saying is, we have two traumatized communities here.
Ladies and gentlemen, please.
We have traumatized, the black community in this township watches, watches the use of force around the, around the country and the, and officers watch their social media, they watch Fox News, they watch everything else, they watch all news programs. They get four hours, the officers get, the officers get four hours of, of race sensitivity training a year and it's undone. Anyway, the question is, where do we go from here? And the answer is, we have to have thoughtful and constructive conversations, not just with the commissioners and the police chief, but with the commissioners and the officers and the police union and line officers to try to solve very difficult problems. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gigi Moffett, Norbert Borough. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to say three things. First and foremost, you have many employees here in Lower Marion Township. And as I know, officers, as well as Jody, who I've known for 20 years, receives a very generous health insurance package that provides for mental and physical well-being. Officers as well as Jody, sorry Jody, I have to use you tonight, honey, but generous paid time off, there's an opportunity that if people are feeling stressed or overwhelmed where they can take that time. And I think that's something that should be discussed, obviously, and more openly with the officers or with any employee, quite frankly. The second piece is, I wanted to just say, thank you for working on the libraries. I know that's coming up, but I did want to say thank you very much because I know the improvements to ballot commitment are really going to be important. The third piece is transparency. It sounds very much like this community, our communities, Norbert, you know, we share a school district with the township. And I don't want to say, we're, I used to say, we're three legs of the same stool. Without the township, you don't have the Borough. The Borough doesn't have the school district. It all works that way. We have to work together and I think transparency in policy, process, and oversight, where is the line between what the commissioners and what the police superintendent and of course, what Mr. McNeely can do and is overseeing? It's really an important piece that the public doesn't have their hands on and you really should do some work into communities providing that information. Thank you.
Maura Gillen, speaking on behalf of Haverford Civic Association. I just wanted to clarify, I know this meeting is somewhat fluid, but we're still in the public privilege portion of the meeting to speak on non-agenda items. I did want to bring to your attention an awareness of our effort within Haverford to maybe bring some development to the historic Haverford train station, both the inbound and the outbound buildings that have been vacant. Haverford Station and Rosemont Station are somewhat distinctive in that they are actually owned by Amtrak to not by SEPTA. There's some space leased by SEPTA. But through some civic association efforts, we've identified a potential developer with significant experience in train station renovation, development, and subleasing. We're very excited to have this person on board. We're trying to work with the township. Thus far, Amtrak has been less responsive than we'd hoped. And so at some point soon, we're going to be coming to you all for some support there, possibly also some zoning issues. But just wanted to make you aware that we're really excited to maybe bring some life to those, that our train station at Haverford, but also our friends at Villanova-Rosemont Civic Association are working just as hard. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Scott Dorsey, Reverend Scott Dorsey. I'm with the Main Line Black Interdominal Ministerial Alliance, which is here on the main line. I am the vice president of our organization and I've come tonight to, again, support your decision, but also say to our community, there's still work to be done. We want the police and we want our community to know that blessed are the peacemakers. And that's what we're working to do. And this situation is an unfortunate situation, but I think that the board made the right decision and we want to support that. But we also know we have work to do. We want our police at the same time to feel safe also. I'm a child of a police officer. My dad served 25 years in the police department in Philly as, and also in the, in the housing department. So we always had a family full of police officers, clergy members, and some other members that, eh, on the other side of the law. But it was a group gathering on Sunday, Sunday dinner. But in saying that, I think as a community, one of the things I, we would like to see is us to continue to work together to make sure that not only are the people, but the police officers are, are working together to make sure that these situations don't happen again. We also realize in this situation, officers do not know what's going to happen when that window opens. We understand that. I, I had to deal with a mother who never knew if her husband was coming back home. At one time, he did get hurt. And the first person there was the mayor, who was Frank Rizzo. So I understand the pressures of an officer's job. I've seen it as a child. I've seen it in, in all situations. But I also know as a resident, as an African-American, that the fear, whether you like it or not, is still there. I have to have that conversation with my children in saying, this is what you have to do when approached by officer. Now that doesn't say there's bad officers. Let's, let's put the record right. There's a lot more good officers than bad officers. And none of our organizations have said anything different than that. But when these situations occur, we need to look at how they were handled and make sure that we can do better in the future. So thank you, board, and continue to do your work and stand for what you know is right. God bless you.
My name is Margaret Young, but most people in the room know me by Maggie. I wasn't going to say something in a public forum, but my heart has been beating out of my chest for the last 45 minutes. So I'm going to say something to you, board members, because it's on my heart and I feel strongly about it. I've worked, I was going to start by saying I'm a resident of the township, which I am, and I'm happy to be here. Thank you for doing what you do to try to make our area a, a good area to live. I also work in the department and that's been one of the greatest pleasures of my life as a, as a job and as a personal experience. And recently, I have gone back to church. Thank you, Pastor. I appreciate what you said this evening. It resonated with me. And one of the things that we've been, I've been learning in church is, you know, about punishment and commendation and punishment. For those who believe in God, God is a God of mercy and of justice. And he has to work in, in connect, he has to work both of those into how he deals with the people that he made in his image, which is all of us. So, you know, my thinking is that although the officers aren't always thrilled with the decisions made by the command staff, in a way, the command staff has the position of being God in the department. What they say, they can, they can commend good behavior and they can punish or discipline bad behavior. And in this case, it seems to me that the superintendent did the best he could come up with after giving it a very hard, giving this traffic stop and what ensued, a very hard look. And that's between, obviously, I don't know any of the details, that's between him and the people that make those decisions. But I'd hate to see, and I feel that it's wrong, to see punishment or discipline go into a more vindictive or manner that takes it outside of the realm of correcting behavior. And I don't think that Charles Murphy sits at home one day or 10 days any differently and thinks about what he may have done, what he may have done wrong, the mistakes that he may have made and the things that he felt he did right, any differently. So to sit home 10 days and to be punished financially significantly and to hurt his family in that manner does not bring about an ultimately better community or interaction from our department to the community. So I love these men with, with all my heart and women, sorry, my boss is here, she's a lady. They're good people. They come to work and they want to do good works. Do I like them every day? No. And do I always get along with all of them? No. But they're good people and although I don't have the chance to lay down my life for them, I would if I needed to. And I couldn't be any prouder to work, work with these people. Thank you.
My name is Victoria Alfred-Laveau. I grew up in Lower Marion Township and Norbert went through the Lower Marion School District. And I can say with confidence that my parents have never sat me down- And I can say with confidence that my parents have never sat me down and told me exactly where to put my hands when a police officer stops me, or what to do to avoid the threat of an officer that may perceive the color of my skin as a reason to act in a different way. I'm white and Jewish, and I think those things have really influenced my life in the township. That's all I can speak on. We've heard a number of really powerful speakers to their own lives in the African-American community. And hearing a Jewish perspective before, I want to say I agree with a lot of what Maggie Young just said about how punishment is something we need to think really carefully about. When it comes to the concept of teshuvah, which means repentance, but it's also a process where the person who has done wrong tries to find their way back to a place where they can reconcile with what they've done and who they've hurt. Punishment by God, by humans, in this room and in our own relationships, when it only serves to send a message that's not backed up by further action among the community that has been hurt, it's not as effective. And whatever you believe in this room tonight, we all just want to go home safe. We want to have something good to eat. I don't even remember what day it is. I'm so tired. And everyone here came with their own views, their own stories, their own traumas, and their own frustrations about what it's like to live in Lower Marion. And I have to say that we can only really be a first-class township, one that we are proud to live in, when it comes to the point that people in this room and everywhere can drive and feel safe, can go home, can go to their places of worship, can go to school and feel safe, regardless of the color of their skin or the way that they may or may not be driving. And when you make your decision or reconsider what you've already done, I just want you all to know that it's not only African-American citizens of Lower Marion that see that we have a lot of work to do.
Good evening. I'm Ben Driscoll, and I live in Wynwood. My apologies to everyone in the room, my issue is not the importance of your issue, but it is something I've caught through this board, this will be the sixth time in 14 months. So my comments to this board are about the continued demand by this board for $500,000 from Lower Marion School District for the off-site improvement at the intersection of Montgomery Avenue and Spring Mill Road. These are the uncontested facts. This payment arose from a condition of approval attached to land development application for the now-open Black Rock Middle School and off-site improvement. The Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code prohibits such conditions of approval. A memorandum of understanding clarifying the conditions of approval is put in place, and I believe some of you are calling that an agreement in quotes. Such an agreement is still violative of the MPC, as an agreement cannot be made to require a land developer to pay for off-site improvements. In addition, that agreement does not nullify the illegal condition of approval that is still in place today. The school district did not offer to make any payment. The demand for payment came from this board. Black Rock Middle School did open on time in September 2022. The school district, while it did file a lawsuit contesting this condition of approval, did not have the luxury of time to maintain this lawsuit. Had it done so, the delay in the court proceedings would have pushed out the opening of the school by at least one year, if not more. The temporary classrooms at Pennwind Elementary that were in place were under a two-year moratorium based on time, not enrollment, from this board. This board did have the luxury to prohibit continued use of the temporary classrooms at Pennwind for any reason, including displeasure of a lawsuit contesting illegal condition of approval. So with those as the uncontested facts, I'd like to remind this board of a meeting you had about a year ago. On January 19, 2022, Commissioner Grimes had been working to develop additional conditions of approval that would have restricted future development in the view shed at 1543 Monk Road and 1420 Rose Glen Road. Despite Mr. Grimes' best efforts, he came into this room and stated, and I quote, "I cannot in good conscience ask this board to approve conditions our solicitor has now indicated exceed our authority." He went on to state that he could have pushed these conditions forward and waited for the developer to, and I quote again, "challenge them in court, but I don't think that's the responsible way to handle this." So my questions are, why does a private land developer get the benefit of not having improper conditions of approval thrust upon it, but the school district does not? Why does a private land developer receive the common sense respect to not have to go to court to fight an improper condition of approval, but the school district does not? Why does the township solicitor review conditions of approval for appropriateness for a private land developer but turns a blind eye to improper conditions placed upon the school district? Thank you.
Are there any other comments in the room? If there are no other comments in the room, we'll turn online.
We have two, and I'm promoting Sandra O'Neill first.
Okay, Ms. O'Neill. Ms. O'Neill.
Sandra O'Neill. I'm in Wynwood. I've been watching the last few meetings, and I've been listening a lot tonight. There are a couple of things I wanted to say that I had planned to say and a couple of things that have come up as I've listened. The Board of Commissioners needs to ask itself as a body who its constituents are: the taxpayers and voters of Lower Marion Township, or the Lower Marion Police Department. There's only one correct answer to that question. Your job as commissioners is to oversee the police department. Those who work in the police department are tasked with protecting and serving those within the township. When those within the township not only do not feel protected, but feel unsafe, it is your duty as commissioners to make decisions, sometimes difficult ones, to ensure that the well-being of the residents and visitors to the township, and to ensure that the community trusts the police officers who we pay to protect us. I thank you for thinking long and hard about the situation at hand and recognizing that a one-day suspension was not enough. This is about accountability. Many people have spoken about this tonight. This sets the tone for what we deserve and expect and want in our community, and that is a sense of safety for everyone. When de-escalation is used, that protects everyone. That protects, protects police officers, and it protects those in the community. I don't believe that the police should fear scrutiny. If they are acting, and I understand that they are making quick decisions in the moment, but with all the training that is spoken of, if they know that they are making the decisions, the best decisions, the least escalating decisions as they can in the moment, they should not fear scrutiny. They should be grateful for it so they can continue to get better at doing their jobs of protecting us. One of the things that stuck out to me when watching that video was the fear. The one time I've been pulled over, I was fearful, never for my life. I didn't know why I was getting pulled over. It was a scary moment for me. But I was very aware with every moment that I was not fearful for my life. We heard on that video, the woman who was pulled over asking for backup, acknowledging that she was scared, and we heard the officer say, "I don't care that you're scared." That, to me, is a perfect example of why this needs to be addressed, not just through this one action, but as many have stated tonight, through further conversation within our community, not just the Board of Commissioners, not just the police, not just those in the community, all of us together, so we can find ways that this is a community where we can all feel safe. Thank you.
The next person is Ms. Adrian Seltzer.
Ms. Seltzer.
Adrian Seltzer. I'm in Wynwood. Please excuse me not having on my camera because I am in the car, and I don't know, I only have two bars. I was dismayed this evening by the veiled threats made by the police officers, the FOP officials, that because this officer got this suspension that they feel is too harsh, well, maybe they're not going to do their jobs. This is an example of escalation. So it is obvious to me, maybe some others, that de-escalation training of the police department is not working as well it is, as it is intended. I do agree that conversation is important. I do agree that I, as a white woman, am not scared when the police pull me over, but I have enough friends who are. And that is a concern. I have looked at the police stops that's on the, on the website, where there are a tonless police stops than there were three, four years ago. The percentages of black and brown people being stopped is still the same. And I think that it is important that that be recognized. Another thing that needs to be recognized is that the police department, their budget makes up about 38%. I'll say that again, 38% over a third of the township's budget is for the police. So we, as citizens of the township, have a right to expect more. And I think if the FOP and the other police officers who spoke went, "How can we do better? How can we all do better?", it would lead for a better conversation instead of veiled threats. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Seltzer. Anyone else online?
There is no one else online.
No one else online. So there is, there are two written comments that were submitted. One, I believe, is appropriate in public comment, I'll save that for that. The other is Michael Pollak of Ardmore, and it's our policy to kind of summarize it rather than read the entire comment. But I know it's been circulated to the board, and everyone on the board has had an opportunity to read it. Michael Pollak of Ardmore provided detailed comments on the draft Ardmore master plan, and also wrote about the crosswalk on Anderson Avenue, traffic calming on Montgomery Avenue, and the recent Lower Marion Police Department disciplinary action. So that is it on public privilege. This is the opportunity now for the board to make any comments in response to public privilege. Do we have any comments from anyone on the board? Commissioner Bernheim.
Nobody will, I certainly will. First of all, I want to thank everybody who came forth and spoke to us this evening, everybody from each viewpoint that, that, that was presented. That's what this process is about. That's what sort of sets us apart from many other portions of the world of, of a democracy, where people come forward and are able to speak their views. The comment was made about fear, and then, as a result of fear, being fearful of doing their job.
Can you speak up, please?
Yeah, I, I said the comment was made about fear, and that fear may cause someone to hesitate in doing their job. While my experience with the police force in the 12 or so years that I've been on the board and prior to that is that they are professionals, and they do their job professionally, no matter what, I would suspect that that would continue. Fear may be something of sitting up here on this board and looking out at, at the audience and saying that to make a response or some comments on this, where you know that many of the people who are here may disagree with you, may cause fear in doing so. But I feel that failure to speak would be remiss. So there are only a couple items that I wish to address with the idea of what I think became the common denominator of everybody who spoke. And that was the idea that communication amongst everybody is what is necessary in order to improve that which we want, and that is a better township. So the, the comment was made about the decision by this board, which disagreed with the recommendation that was provided to us by our superintendent of, of police of a one-day decision, and increasing that, and characterized it as both excessive and irrational. You may disagree with the number of days or hours that were assessed by the board that was appropriate, that the board felt in its vote was appropriate for the circumstances. But I want to make sure that you understand, it was not irrational. There is an internal discipline procedure, a copy of which I have with me this evening, which sets forth in accordance with the 1985 Lautermill decision, constitutional decision about how police discipline is to take place. And the bottom line is that eventually, it is the Board of Commissioners to whom the recommendation is given, and they then must make an assessment from the totality of the circumstances that have been presented to them. It is not without guardrails. It is not without directive as to how that is done. In fact, there is what is known as factors of equity. There are five of them. They include, in just brief form, the seriousness of the offense, a deterrent effect which sends a message out to the other employees of the township, a degree of the employee culpability, the employee's previous discipline and performance record, and the employee's experience level. I don't believe it would be helpful, nor do we have the time, to go through each one of those items to explain to you what the thought process was. But the point I wish to raise is that they were carefully considered. Nothing was done irrationally. It was done with the hope that it was going to, among other things, have an appropriate message, not a negative message, of, of going forward. There has also been comments that the board has been subject to social media. I also want to assure you, that is not true. Both social media and the overwhelming number of emails and phone calls, which I received, all requested a full termination of the officer's position. That, in my humble opinion, and I believe of all of my colleagues on the board, would have been inappropriate. And therefore, that would have been excessive, and that was not done. While we are not blind or tone deaf to what we hear from our constituents, and we listen to it, we do not look to see which direction the political weather vane is pointing and then make, make a call. The decisions which are made are with our own judgment, which has been given, which we have been elected to exercise in order to fulfill our duty to better this community. There also was a statement which was made, and I think it was directed at me, although my name was not utilized, since I was the one that spoke and made the motion for the suspension which was approved, in reference to being anti-labor and union busting. The support of that was purportedly some reference to some prior FOP actions that were taken in front of this board. So let me first dispel, in the strongest way possible, that never, at any point in the comments that I made, or I could say, in the 68-plus years that I've been on this planet, has there been an anti-labor or union busting thought that has crossed my mind. And it did not at that time. The reference which was made to prior comments of the FOP here was that they came before this board and questioned the judgment that we had exercised in connection with the penalty that was given to a member of command staff. Truth be known that I didn't need to hear that criticism to happen to agree with the commentary. But that commentary was listened to by everybody on the board, of making sure that what we did was fair and equitable, and as they would say, the discipline was commensurate with the acts which took place. That was the point to be made. You are heard, you are listened to, notwithstanding the signs that you have here, you are supported. We do, please, thank you. We do listen to what it is that you have, have to say. And I think that Officer Braun will be able to tell you that when I had the privilege of serving as president of this board, I started... of serving as president of this board, I started something where he, as the head of the FOP, and I, and in fact, I think it was also his predecessor, would meet individually for coffee. For the mere idea of just, "Let's talk to one another. What freely is on your mind and what freely can, what can we do?". This was done with the knowledge of our superintendent. Nobody was running behind, you know, closed doors. But it was the idea to have communication in order so that we could learn what was taking place in order to improve, improve our, our, our police department. That theme has come through this evening. In addition, I want to correct something else. There have been references made by others that seem to indicate that this board came to some conclusion that what occurred on January eighth was racially motivated. That is not true. That has not been the consensus or, or even the thought of anyone that I know on this board. And in fact, when I spoke last time, I made the comment that what, there wasn't anything that would give us reason to believe that that's what, what occurred. But I noted that there is a clear and unmistakable perception within the black and brown community that they are being treated unfairly or they are concerned when they are pulled over for police. And that that perception all by itself is a reality with which we must deal. And dealing with that is separate and apart from the discipline of the particular officer. And dealing with that is something that this board has discussed in length, and we have noted, it's not the first time we have discussed this in length, which indicates that notwithstanding efforts which we have made to improve relationships, the bottom line is, we are not getting the results that we all, and when I say all, I believe that includes the folks that are in this room and those who may have had to leave, but were here earlier, all want. That is something that we take equal responsibility for to figure out, what are we doing that is not getting us where we want to? So the idea that comes across that we should have dialogue and, and communication, we have been there for a long time. We think that what is occurring is that our communication skills amongst these others, amongst ourselves, needs improvement. We ought to do that. We received, I believe, Mr. Braun, it may not have been, there was a letter from you and there was a fairly lengthy report, and in that report, there was a recommendation of having conferences with officers, staff, commissioners, and, and a committee. And I applaud that, not because it's merely something that I recommended about five or eight years ago and started meeting and having those coffees, but because that's the manner in which that we are going to be able to assist one another in doing that which everybody here is interested in doing and making this a better community. So while I recognize that you disagree with what the recommendation was for the discipline to be imposed, the only thing that I could ask of you this evening is to understand it wasn't without rational thought and it wasn't without the desire of doing something for the betterment of the community. You have the right to take that to somebody else, to go ahead and set, and take a look at our judgment and see if they think that it, it was an error. But it wasn't without consideration of those factors that we are required by law to look at. So at the risk of taking more time, again, I, I thank you all for being here. I thank you for your comments, and again, they are taken to heart.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Bernheim. Commissioner Kramer.
I want to thank all of you for coming to share your thoughts and your feelings, both last week and this week. But tonight, I just want to respond to the public comment from our officers. And I am speaking only for myself when I say that I have always been very supportive of our Lower Marion Police and am grateful for the quality of our police force and your efforts to protect our community. When I was a young lawyer in the Philadelphia Law Department, I represented many police officers in civil rights cases against them. And I learned to appreciate the difficulty and the dangers inherent in your job and to greatly respect those who choose to devote their lives to helping to keep our community safe. The decision about discipline of a single officer for a unique set of facts was not intended as a message of non-support for our officers who daily put their lives on the line to protect us. It should not be viewed as showing a lack of support or being influenced by anything other than the facts of this particular situation. I do hear your concerns, and I hope that we can all move forward in a productive joint way as we each serve this community to the best of our respective abilities.
Thank you, Commissioner Kramer. Anyone else?
I, I'll, I'll take the opportunity to make some comments and, and I will echo my colleagues to thank everybody who made comment, who showed up, and who is, is here tonight, both in person and online. This is not easy for our police force. This is not easy for our community. This is not easy for us up here on the dais. I have lost more sleep over this decision than I have probably on all other decisions combined while sitting on this board for the past six years. We made a decision, we made a decision not to follow the recommendation of our command staff. In the past, we followed the recommendation of our command staff and been criticized. This time, we have not followed the recommendation of our command staff and have been criticized. But that's our job. That's what we signed up for. You're right, we aren't police officers, but we are charged with handing down discipline when there are violations of policy, and it's something we take extremely seriously. We don't take it lightly. It's not done without extensive deliberation. It's not based on social media. It's not based on public pressure. It's based on what we feel is right. Clearly, as a board, we've disagreed with what the FOP thinks is appropriate discipline. Clearly, as a board, we disagree with what the public thinks is appropriate discipline. In some cases, some think it's too excessive, others think it's not serious enough. Ultimately, we are all one family. Families have disagreements. Families argue with each other. Families don't see eye to eye on every single issue. But family respects each other, and we need to respect each other. And we need to use this opportunity, as a number of, of the members here tonight have said, to make ourselves better. We need to communicate, we need to communicate more, and we need to build off this. Somebody had mentioned we can't have a first-class township without first-class policing, and that's absolutely right. And we do have first-class policing in this township. I am incredibly saddened to hear that our police are afraid to do their job or to speak up. They shouldn't. No police officer in this township, as far as I ever know, has ever been disciplined for doing their job or for speaking up, only for violations of policy, and that's what happened here. We, when there is a policy of violation or, of the violation of our policy, we must discipline. You may disagree with what our discipline is, but again, we are doing what we think is right. And we are doing our best, just like our police are doing our best, just like our community is doing their best. We, as it's been said, we must grow from this, we must learn from this, we must work together to be better and to be a better family for all of us, for every single person in this room, for every member of the community, for every member of this board, and for every member of our police. Thank you. Anyone else have, Commissioner Grimes?
Thank you, Vice President Gavron. So I'll start with what everyone else said, that thank you for, for, to everybody on who's come and spoken tonight or otherwise participated. So sitting up here, it's a unique perspective. Unfortunately, tonight, the perspective is that we have, which is obvious to everyone here, that we have a divide in this community. And I regret that our police feel that they aren't properly supported by our, by our township. I also regret that the residents here and the many others who communicated with us also feel that they can't trust the police. And I, regardless of how one feels tonight, or even if someone's watching who has absolutely no opinion on this, although that's kind of hard to believe, it's clear that we have work to do as a board and as a community. Once this discipline matter has concluded, we're all still going to be here, police and residents. I'm confident that this board will look hard at what more we can do to bridge the gap between those on each side of this matter. I hope that everyone here and those watching on, on television will work on this also. It's certainly in everyone's interest to do so and in the entire community's interest as well. So thank you again for all coming tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Zelov, did I see you had comments?
Yes, Vice President Gavron, can, can you hear me okay since you weren't able to earlier?
Yep.
Okay. Just a few observations and comments after listening to everyone's comments tonight. This started out as a traffic stop. Traffic stops benefit this community. Commissioners have complaints all the time about speed of traffic. They're probably at the top of the list. There was bad judgment by the officer on the tactics, but there were no civil rights violated. There was no pattern of behavior here. And traffic stops can be risky for police officers, especially when the windows are tinted, when they don't know who's inside and whether there's weapons. And as, as, as has been said, officers make split-second decisions. There were many charges by, levied against the driver, all have been upheld by the local district justice. We, tonight, have had a much more representative opinions from a broad spectrum of this community than we have previously on this topic, and clearly lots of care for Lower Marion Township. As I said last week, ten days, a ten-day suspension, my view is too much as we perform our oversight of the police department. But I think there's still time to reconsider the decision. And that was suggested by the president of the FOP, who spoke as the first speaker. And I want to thank him for concluding his remarks in a positive and optimistic way and we, and, and talking about dialogue, which has been said previously by my colleague. This township invests heavily in training of police officers. We have high standards and we have high expectations for our police department. And we continue to have and need a dedicated and well-trained police department, and that is vital for this community as it has been and, and going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. [applause] Are there other comments from the board? Commissioner Wellen.
Thank you, Vice President Gavron. I would like to, for a moment, address the, the non-police issues. I do think, unfortunately, they were raised tonight and not going to be given their due, which I think are significant issues, certainly not in the light of what we've been dealing with tonight. But I do want to just say thank you to those other members of the public who came out. First and foremost, I did not catch your names, but the couple who were in the horrific accident. I live four houses from that intersection. Oscar, thank you. I am frankly appalled that that intersection is still as it is. I have worked directly with PennDOT, with their engineers, with our township engineers. PennDOT admits, actually, that that intersection at Remington and Lancaster is the single most dangerous intersection in the township, but refused to do anything. They paid lip service, PennDOT, that is, about a year and a half ago, they got a safety grant in order to begin a redesign of that intersection without telling anyone, including myself or the township staff in any way. They used all the money that they had for the redesign, and then they just stopped work. So they have not continued it. I have called on them to do so. I've asked for them to pick it back up. They seem to have no inclination to do so despite our opportunities. So I continue to call them out publicly, and anyone who has connections at PennDOT, I would be happy to hear them and reach out to them myself. I'm not going to stop. I am very glad that you are here and walking around. I'm nervously thankful that you are. We witnessed at that intersection, again, I said I live four houses down, I back up to Lancaster. I've worked closely with the traffic safety department here for twelve years since I moved in. They have consistently clocked cars at sixty to seventy miles an hour heading from Lanconaw up to Remington Road. That section of Lanconaw, sorry, that section of Lancaster Avenue from City Avenue up to Remington Road is forty-five miles an hour. It is actually the only section of Lancaster Avenue in, from, all the way down from four seventy-six through into the city that is forty-five miles an hour, and PennDOT refused to change it or even consider changing it. There are significant major issues and weekly, if not even sometimes daily, in good weather or bad weather, major accidents there. I am very happy to see that you were not taken away in stretchers by ambulances to Lanconaw. That happens quite unfortunately frequently. My neighbor who lives at that corner has had cars in his yard through his fence, again, almost weekly for years now. So I will continue to call out PennDOT publicly, and I hope everyone else does too, because that is a travesty in this neighborhood. And unfortunately, it is a state road, so PennDOT has full and final authority over it, and the township can't do anything but, but jump up and down and say that we want something changed. So secondly, I'd also like to address, as the chairman of the Parks and Rec Department, I really appreciate Mr. Walter and Ms. Ingerman-Walter for coming out today. I have spoken with them previously about the Gladwin Playground as well as other playgrounds. I know that, you know, no one likes to say, no one likes to hear, "Just you wait, it's coming." But I will tell you that the ARP funds, there will be a significant pitch from myself to this commission to create an entirely new accessible playground. That is currently being worked with staff to determine the pricing for that location, viability, when that could be put in, as well as a complete overhaul and readdressing of many of our playgrounds. There are fourteen playgrounds. They all need to be looked at. Some of them in this township have been recently replaced and are beautiful and amazing, and they all should be. There are two more slated for this year. My proposal for this township through ARP funds will be to actually bring up by a year the full redevelopment of the Gladwin Playground as well as several others, and to also replace, and obviously this cannot happen immediately, but replace all of the wood chip grounding with the rubberized floor mat. So again, I, I apologize that I'm giving, you know, the horrible answer of wait and see because here it comes, but unfortunately, that's, that's where we are. And when we get to the ARP funds and CIP funds of how this board will divvy those up, you will see those proposals coming forth and you will see actions by this township's Parks and Recs Department. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Wellen. Commissioner O'Neil.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for being here, and I apologize that I'm speaking last. I didn't mean any intent by that. But just to thank everybody who's here, particularly the, the policemen and women who came this evening in very rational form, expressed by thinking that is both clear and unemotional. Same thing goes to the community members who spoke from the NAACP and others. I think your grace and your messaging of hope and really understanding both sides of this important issue has to be heard. And I would hope that the next generation, though my children, your, your children, grandchildren, your grandchildren and children, learn about how to respect officers who put their lives online every day that they're on the force, and maybe when they're even not on the force. And that's where I think the biggest degree of disparity comes. And that's where I think the biggest degree of disparity comes, is the way we are teaching our next generation about how to respect others. I grew up, just personal story, with a World War II grandfather in charge of my household. He taught me to drive, and I knew how to respect an officer. Even now, I do feel fear, and that's a good thing because it keeps me steady and I know to not talk back. I know not to argue. I know to, you know, mind my manners. Often times, it works. I have had tickets that I've paid, et cetera. But the point is that this moment for us is a learning opportunity for everybody for how we really talk about the next generation and to really love and support our officers because they're here for you. None of you here in this room would have ever acted with any of our police officers the way that person did the day she was pulled over. You wouldn't have. I've worked and talked with many of you. It is not in your DNA. So, please, support that messaging and support our police officers. They really deserve it. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? President Sinai, he said he had comment.
Thank you, Vice President Gavron. Can you hear me okay? Okay. Well, thank you, and I apologize for not being able to be there in person. And thank you to everyone who spoke tonight. You know, one of the great things about our form of government is that nights like this, give everyone a voice. And as you can tell from the comments tonight and in previous weeks, people feel passionately about this issue, albeit from different perspectives. I'm going to try to not repeat too much what my colleagues already have stated pretty eloquently. There's a few things I'd like to address. And the first is by background, when there's a matter involving police officer discipline, it always comes before the Board of Commissioners. And we always carefully consider the details of the case in all of the contexts before coming to a decision. It's not based on what is put on social media. It is not based on public outcry. It is based on us doing diligently what we are elected to do, which is to exercise our judgment in our oversight. And we act in the best interest of the township as a whole. As you saw last week, there can be differences in views on our board reflecting differences in the room tonight, which is why all 14 of us participate, and the decision takes a majority. So, our Board's decision is about this specific incident in officer. It is not a political statement. It is not a policy statement. It is not a function of social media. It is not listening to a mob. It is not also expressing any sort of dissatisfaction with the many, many dedicated and talented members of the Lower Marion Police Department. It is based on the facts of this case, which are not always public and which we do not discuss in public meetings. Conversely, to those who have called for termination of officers, without getting into details, I don't think it is warranted, and I think there'd be counterproductive. To our officers, I say this: We recognize that you do an outstanding job. You win awards. You innovate. You rise to the occasion in difficult circumstances, such as with George Floyd protests, marches, and the Ving. You run towards gunfire. You confiscate firearms in cars and traffic stops. You stand by stranded motorists until help arrives. You care for those in distress, and you are the guardians of this township. You need not fear misstep. We aspire to perfection. We do not demand it. I recognize that in these polarized times, your job could be more difficult. Mine is too, but we rise to those challenges. And I also want to recognize the positive work that the Lower Marion Police Department as a whole is doing. I encourage everyone to go and revisit the recent badgeing ceremony and look at the racial and gender diversity of the five officers who recently received their badges. Lower Marion Police Department has posted its traffic stop data for years. Look at that data and do a credible statistical test for bias. And I recognize that, you know, that is a lengthy literature about how to do that. And I am confident you will find nothing. And I recognize I did not feel that way to some, but I think our data supports an unbiased approach to traffic stops. You know, this shouldn't be a big story. It should. It should not be some sort of referendum about leasing in general or national issues surrounding race. It is not. It is a local issue. It is about our town, about the Lower Marion we want. It's about the basic blocking and tackling of doing the best possible job consistently. We all want the same thing. A township where residents, staff, and officers alike feel safe, supported, and valued. That is not a zero-sum game. Those objectives are not in conflict with each other. We get there by rolling up our sleeves and by working collaboratively, constructively, and positively towards our common goals. Over the past couple of months, we have received a variety of constructive, positive suggestions from the community, and I'm grateful for that. We recently have had constructive, collaborative conversations with the FOP, and I'm grateful for that, too. I am looking forward to continuing that kind of engagement with everyone. That's how we make progress. As people have observed, this is an opportunity to take a fresh look at policies and practices. If for no any other reason than this has illuminated areas that might need working on. The township and the Board has already started working on that, and I look forward to doing that together, like the neighbors and colleagues that we are. Thank you, Vice President Gavron.
President Sinai. So, with that, unless I see any other comments, that concludes Public Privilege. We're going to move on to the next section of our meeting. Before we do, I will let you know you are not required to stick around for the entire meeting. You're welcome to, certainly. We will give everyone a couple of minutes to clear the room if you so desire. Ladies and gentlemen, if I can remind you, we still, ladies and gentlemen, we still have a meeting! [inaudible] Thank you very much. [inaudible] I am going to assume that whoever's left in this room is excited for the rest of this meeting. So, thank you very much for sticking around. So, the good news is that for those of you who stuck around, there's a prize for sticking around. The bad news is the prize is paying attention to the rest of the meeting. So, the next section of our meeting, Chris, can you close the door, please? Thank you. Never mind. All right. Sticking around to listen to us for the rest of the meeting. Look under your chairs. No, I'm just kidding. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. The next section of our meeting is public comment. This is the section of our meeting where members of the public may address the Board on any agenda items. We ask that you please keep comments to three minutes or less. If there is a group of people in attendance who are speaking on the same topic, we ask that a spokesperson be selected to address the Board, and they keep their comments to five minutes or less. All comments relating to agenda items, including comments on the stormwater ordinance, should be made now. So, if you have any comments, please approach your podium if you haven't already. The floor is yours, Ms. Gillan.
Good evening, Maura Gillan-Haverford. I wanted to speak about Consent Calendar Item H. I do understand the intent behind the condition of approval included in the plan for 1543 Monk Road, but there's no authority to designate the parcels created as Class 1 historic resources regardless of any agreement from the current property owner. So, the condition of approval in this ordinance are in error. I appreciate the additional research that's been done and the emerging understanding that entire parcels, tracks, or properties are not appropriate for designation as historic resources. The recent modification of our zoning code definition does not change that. The rest of our code is clear and consistent in describing historic resources as buildings, sites, structures, or objects. Pennsylvania statute and federal language are similar: Buildings, Sites, Structures, and Objects as well as Districts. Last week, there was an effort to modify the Historical Commission's recommendation to determine that each property would wholly constitute a historic site that could be designated as Class 1. Staff noted that the Township definition of historic site references the National Park Services National Register Bulletin 15 and says, "Examples of historic sites include but are not limited to those listed in this publication." Bulletin 15 clearly states that properties with large acreage or multiple resources are usually considered as districts, and that's exactly the case here. The historic resource located at 1543 Monk Road is a contributing resource to the Mill Creek Historic District listed on the National Register of Historic Places. Pennsylvania guidance is the same, to consider large areas as districts. Within Bulletin 15, a historic site is defined as the location of a significant event, occupation, or activity, or the location of a building or structure standing, ruined, or vanished with historic, cultural, or archaeological value. And examples provided include things like battlefields, campsites, rock carvings, shipwrecks, and designed landscapes, which this land at Monk Road is not. It's just acreage. Placing a home at the top of the hill does not make an entire hill a designed landscape. There's no longer a requirement that a resource have a National Register determination of eligibility to be placed on our inventory, as had been the case previously. You know we have our own criteria for designation of historic resources, but if we're going to reference federal guidance in defining sites, it's also appropriate to consider any existing federal designation. There's already a determination of eligibility that applies here. All of this land is part of the Mill Creek Historic District. In that National Register entry, the Griscum House is clearly described as a contributing resource in that historic district. But there's no reference to the historic value of any of the land around that building. To describe these parcels as historic sites and consider them additional contributing resources to that district would require extensive research and survey. Without that effort, there's no justification for this ordinance, and there's no need for it. These properties are already included in the overlay district because they're already part of a historic district. Any new construction on these lots would be considered non-contributing to the district but would get a review by the Harb to ensure compatibility with the district. That's our process. With proper documentation, the specific site of the former sanitarium could justifiably be considered a contributing resource to the district and designated at the township level as an individual historic resource, but beyond that, there's nothing to be done. You can't add an address to A180 without having the research properly described historic resource located there, and there are no historic resources properly identified at any of these addresses. I urge you to withdraw the advertisement of this ordinance and suspend this effort. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joseph Abramson, Ballackinwood. First, with regards to the firefighter and EMS credit, tax credit, which I 100% support, I'm just wondering, and just throwing it out there, an idea, is there anything to be done for people who do not own property, rent, you know, some sort of, you know, swapping or something? Then, with regards to the item on the zoning or building and planning with regards to the FFL, you know that you're wading into, you know, wavy or choppy water when the ordinance has a whole legislative preamble. Now, the legislative preamble says that FFLs are not acceptable as a home-based business, and then it goes on to different reasons. As I've asked several times before up here, you know, with all the FFLs in Lower Marion that have been here for decades, how many complaints have you received regarding FFLs based out of a home? And if you're going to say none, then that whole legislative preamble is worthless because we know that it's possible to have an FFL out of your house and have nothing wrong with it. In addition, the proposed ordinance still has, you know, unconstitutional or illegal sections, specifically where it says that you need to be over 21 to purchase a rifle. The Pennsylvania Uniform Firearms Act, which preempts local municipalities from enacting legislation regarding the purchasing of firearms, states that you need to be 18 to purchase rifle or shotgun. In addition, it says that you have to be 18 to purchase a handgun. The Uniform Firearms Act of Pennsylvania, which preempts municipalities from enacting legislation regarding the purchasing of firearms, states that you need to be 21 to purchase a handgun in Pennsylvania. And those are just, right off the top, a couple of the errors in that ordinance. So, as was mentioned, not just by me, but by some of the members of the Board, that, you know, this legislation, this ordinance, will welcome a lawsuit, you really should triple or quadruple-check the ordinance before you enact it because it's one thing to fight an ordinance that, you know, is pretty rock-solid, but it's quite another thing to fight, you know, to defend an ordinance that is error-prone. Thank you.
Hello. My name's Grant. I am the owner of ShotTech LLC. We teach people how to shoot and defend themselves using advanced simulation technology.
Grant, if you could use your full name when you introduce yourself?
Grant Schmidt.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I'm also now a Lower Marion resident, which is really exciting. Okay. So, first off, everything that came before should tell you, in regards to the FFL proposal, to stay in your lane and not get involved in state and federal law with your wild FFL proposal. It's a wild repeat of history and a It's a wild repeat of history, and a few things I'll mention. One, this proposal, repeat of history, you cost taxpayers over $100,000 to FOAC and the NRA, and yet you say there's no, you say on the proposal, there is no financial burden when you paid out of our pocket last time because insurance wouldn't cover your illegal ordinance then, and you acknowledged publicly last time that the financial burden is again likely. So we have a contradiction here, a big one. And if you have that money, another $100,000 or more, spend it on a crosswalk across Hymes or spend it on Remington and Lancaster and advocating for that and not on losing badly again. This thing is riddled with typos even, and still, after I brought those typos to your attention, it's unbelievable. You think it's going to hold legal weight when you obviously can't even proofread. As a resident and a business owner in Ballack-Inwood, I'm greatly concerned about a township that talks so much about something and yet doesn't proofread its proposals. And even after they brought to your attention. You would scold your child if they turned in a school paper like this: "FLLs are not a thing. 4472s, not a thing." This is a joke. I wanted to list the ways this is so out of bounds but get wrecked in ignorance again, or simply I request, as a resident, simply contact an attorney who knows the industry and try and write. Your solicitor clearly does not. And are you ready? Is Lower Merion Police Department ready for open carry protests up and down Montgomery Avenue and Lancaster Avenue? They happened in the past. Are you expecting them again? And this confluence tonight, the irony, if you're anti-self-defense and anti-cop, you're pro-criminal. The results are, well, Philly. They just lost their challenge to regulate FFLs and guns again, and you admitted last time that this isn't about crime. So what's it about? It's about pure politics. I'm going to make this short, but I know about racism. It took me a long time to start my business, and I'll never forget going to my zoning attorney and saying, why are these zoning officials, this wasn't Lower Merion, talking about street people and asking me about safety in regards to unknown third-party persons coming into the community and so on? And I said, what the hell is this, are they talking about? Because you know what they're talking about. It's government doublespeak for black people. And that's, I mean that wholeheartedly. And anybody who doubts that need only listen to the township meeting in which residents were lamenting my business and the petition. I sometimes listen to that meeting in the gym to get pumped up. So, and last thing I'll say, just in summation here, if you have genuine concerns about security, I yet again reiterate, send someone from LMPD over, and I'm happy to discuss security. For home-based FFLs, a lot of their security comes from anonymity. Don't wreck that. The ATF knows that. Don't wreck that. And lastly, I'm just going to say, in regards to all this, you have two, at least, firearms training simulators in the community. One is at the Monco Training Facility and the other one's at ShotTech, so take advantage of it. Invite community members to an event there or at my place, and there you can actually discuss standard operating procedures in real time demonstratorily and see the consequences of your actions in real time. So I'm glad you have moved into the community and see where we go from here. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment in the room? Seeing none, are there any comments online?
No.
Okay, we have a couple of written comments, and again, as I said before, these were distributed to the board ahead of time. If anyone wants copies of these or the comments in public privilege, which I did not mention, you can get them from our esteemed Township Secretary. So just to summarize, Elaine Beam of Penn Valley wrote in support of banning the sale of guns and ammunition in Lower Merion. Paul Costa of Merion Station wrote in support of the ordinance regulating federal firearm licensee locations. Michael Pollak of Ardmore wrote in support of agenda items 7F, 7I, 7J, and 7L. And if I can, I'm going to try to say what those are, because I think we should at least do that. 7F is a resolution authorizing staff to submit a Monco 2040 implementation grant, application to fund capital purchases for bike share in City Avenue District. 7I is a ward of contract, Ballack-Inwood Library Exterior Finishes. 7J is approval of eligibility list for the real estate tax credit for volunteer firefighters and ambulance. And 7L, resolution authorizing the submission of the application and business plan for the redevelopment assistance capital program grant for the Ardmore Community Center Palm Senior Center replacement renovation. And again, Michael Pollak wrote in support of those items. Barbara Shulson wrote in support of the ordinance regulating federal firearm licensee locations, and Frank Tavani of Wynwood wrote in support of bike share program in the City Avenue Special Services District. So that's all the public comment. Any Commissioner response to public comment? All right, seeing none. President Sinai.
Thank you, Vice President Gavin. Just, I had to comment on just a couple of these things. You know, to Mr. Abramson's comment about that there are no complaints about the FFLs in Lower Merion, therefore, therefore, they're just A-OK. You know, it's just a pet peeve of mine, right? Like, so we have a small sample of things in Lower Merion, and from that, you know, one cannot extrapolate whether you have an issue, right? So it's like saying, well, let's say we have a highway and we allow a speed limit of 250 mile an hour on the highway. The highway passes through Lower Merion, but like, none of the accidents at 250 miles an hour happen in Lower Merion. They all happen elsewhere. Do we conclude that the speed limit of 250 miles an hour in Lower Merion is safe? I don't think we do, right? Really, you know, it's just because it's only a small section of the highway. And instead, what we have to do is extrapolate from a large sample, which is a national sample, and pretty quickly get the conclusion that, you know, the literature suggests that there actually is an issue. And then the second is for the comment about, you know, from Mr. Schmidt about ShotTech being secure. You know, this really isn't about a particular establishment, right? The fact that one is doing a good job and being secure does not mean that all future ones would do a good job and be secure, which is why one has legislation to make sure that everyone, you know, behaves accordingly. Anyway, thank you very much, Vice President Gavin.
Great, thank you, Professor Sinai. Appreciate it. Any other comments from the board? Seeing none, we will move on to the next item, which is the consent calendar. Is there any item on the consent calendar that anyone would like to remove? Seeing none, I will make a motion for approval of the consent calendar as presented, including the items from the meetings of the Administrative and Human Resources Committee and Health Committee held earlier this evening. Do I have a second? Thank you. Commissioner Bernheim. Sorry, going a little too fast. Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
For the adoption of the consent calendar, Mr. Bernheim.
Aye.
Mr. Churchill.
Yes.
Mr. Courtney.
Yes.
Mr. Gavran.
Yes.
Mr. Grimes.
Yes.
Ms. S. Kramer.
Yes.
Ms. G. Kramer.
Yes.
Mr. McCombe.
Yes.
Mr. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil.
Aye.
I'm looking to see who jumped back on screen. Mr. Zella.
Aye.
Mr. Sinai.
Yes.
The consent calendar is duly adopted.
Excellent, thank you very much, Madam Secretary. The next item is the authorization to advertise ordinance, Chapter 155 zoning, the federal firearms license, which I believe is on page 20 of your packets. We'll start, if Commissioner McCombe wants to make some comments?
I do, and I will make the motion as well with your approval, Vice President Gavin.
Absolutely.
As most of you know, Subcommittee of the Board was consisting of myself, Commissioner McKean, and Commissioner Gilbert Kramer, was tasked with evaluating the issue of appropriate zoning for gun shops, ammunition, sales, and federal firearms licensing in the township. In broad terms, in broad strokes, proposed amendments to the zoning code would limit such activities in residential areas near schools and in pedestrian-friendly commercial areas, but continue to permit them in other areas, such as commercial areas with appropriate zoning standards. These regulations, the amendments apply prospectively. They're not going to affect any or impact any existing FFL. They do not regulate or govern the possession or use of firearms, and we're aware there's a preemption statute in the state, and we have drafted this with recognition of what is covered by the preemption statute and what is not. Now, I'll note that although I think one of the public commenters said it was murky, choppy water, I don't think that's the description I would use. There are certain areas that are settled. There are certain areas in this sector that are not settled, and I think the scope of zoning authority is one of them. We have made these amendments in consultation with our solicitor, with paying attention to the public comments that Mr. Abramson and Mr. Schmidt have provided on multiple occasions. And we do so because we think they're appropriate. We think that the current regulatory scheme in Pennsylvania recognizes generally broad zoning authority, which is what we're exercising here. So with that in mind, I have, instructed by our Township Secretary, that I have to read the amendments to the proposed draft ordinance, and it's fairly lengthy, so bear with me. So I move that we authorize the Township Secretary to advertise a public hearing and notice of attention to adopt an ordinance to amend the code of the Township of Lower Merion, Chapter 155 entitled "Zoning," Article 2, Definition, Section 155-2.1. Definitions to create a definition for federal firearms licensee FFL. Article 5, uses to amend Table 5.1, uses to permit FFL as a conditional use in the TC2 LI, CAD- RCA, CAD-BCR, and RHR districts. Article 5, uses to amend Table 5.1, uses to update the table's notes. Article 5, uses to amend Table 5.3, use regulations to incorporate the conditional use standards for FFL established by the disorderance to amend Article 10, supplemental use regulations of nonconformities, to create a new, Section 155-10.15, federal firearms licensee FFL. And therein provide for the regulations throughout with the following amendments. So that's the first part. Now comes the amendments. And these are the amendments to the draft ordinance as it appeared in the agenda, if anybody's following on that, and I think all the Commissioners have that in front of them. So on page of the ordinance, it's page nine of the agenda, Section 5, we're going to amend Section 155-10-15A as follows. Line 10, change the word "uses" to "areas." Line 13, change "all" to "those." Line 14, add the following language after "look to." Pren 1, current federal state regulations related to firearms, ammunition, and explosive devices, and then goes on to subparagraph 2. Line 15, replace "as well as" with "and" in subparagraph 3. Line 16, add the following language after quote "local levels," including but not limited to zoning regulations. Moving on to page 9, we're going to delete Section 155-10-15C, Subparagraph 4. We're going to replace Section 155-10-15C, Subparagraph 5, with the following language: Quote, "Any doors and windows which are directly accessible from any public space such as a street, alley, or sidewalk, or from any common area, such as a lobby or shared hallway, comma, an FFL shall install and maintain smash-resistant doors and windows." We're going to delete Section 155-10-15C, Subparagraph 8, and replace Section 155-10-15C, Subparagraph 9, with the following language: Quote, "An FFL shall provide and maintain an operational safety plan demonstrating compliance with all applicable laws and regulations prohibiting the sale of firearms, ammunition, or destructive devices to certain individuals, including but limited to those restrictions contained in 18 U.S. Section 922, Subparagraph B, as amended." And then finally, on page 10, we're going to replace Section 155-10-15C, Subparagraph 12, with the following language: Quote, "An FFL shall provide and maintain an operational safety plan to ensure that all required firearms transaction records required by federal and state law are completed for every transfer of a firearm to a nonlicensed agent." So with that set of amendments, if you were following, I'll make the motion, I'll ask for a second, then we'll see if there's comments. So do we have a second for the motion? Thank you, Commissioner McKean. Do you have any Commissioner comments or questions? Commissioner McKean?
Thank you, just some brief comments. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Schmidt, Mr. Abramson for coming out here. I may not always agree with your opinions, but I certainly respect your general knowledge in this area, and I respect the fact that you keep coming out to these meetings. As Commissioner McCombe mentioned, our Subcommittee has met many times on this issue. Our last meeting was just on March 13th. That again included our solicitor. We also, to the extent we're like the Ghostbusters, and we started with three Ghostbusters, we added the fourth Ghostbuster in Commissioner Sean Kramer. So she came out to the last couple of meetings, and we really appreciate all of her input, too. We really tried to stay within our lane here, which is zoning, not firearm possession, and I think that that is exemplified by, if you look at the recent modifications here in our certificates of conditions of approval, we eliminated number four and number eight, and then also abbreviated number nine. And that is really to just, again, stay in our lane and focus on the zoning issue. Also, I've commented before, I'm sort of taking the bullet, biting the bullet here and laying, Rock Hill Road is one of the areas that will have firearms. It's right around the corner from my house, but it's important that, for this to be valid, that there are multiple areas throughout the township where you can have firearms. So as we have in our proposed motion here, proposed ordinance, the City Avenue area, Rock Hill Road, and portions of Ardmore are all areas. You know, we're not burying it in one excluded tiny area. So I think it's a very fair ordinance under the circumstances, and I fully support it.
Thank you. Just to follow up to Commissioner McKean's comment, said, we believe that because there are various locations for these to exist, they don't limit or burden any resident's core Second Amendment rights or otherwise implicate any of the concerns in the state preemption statute. So any other comments or questions, Commissioner O'Neil?
Oh, thank you very much. You pointed, I think you may have just answered my question, but mine is more of a, I'm not sure I'm going to support this, not because I don't respect the work of the Subcommittee for sure, I appreciate it, but my concern is really more of protocol, that it doesn't seem to me, or it hasn't been demonstrated or illustrated, that there was an industry representative, somebody who really understands Second Amendment legal implications in terms of this ordinance. I know it's zoning and not Second Amendment law, but the two do intersect here somewhat in this. And so I guess I'm disappointed that there wasn't a seat at the table for an industry expert like some of the people who have spoke in the past and this evening on this ordinance. That aside, though, I think the cleanups make sense. I appreciate that we were able to meet earlier this week and really make revisions that help create a tighter ordinance. But again, I can't support this based on process and that a major stakeholder was left off of the committee, but thank you.
Sure, thank you, Commissioner O'Neil. Commissioner Bernheim?
Yeah, thank you very much. And Commissioner O'Neil, I can understand if that were the case, why you would say, let me correct it, because her own Township Solicitor as well, I think, with others, from members of the committee who did a lot of research, I know that Commissioner Kramer, I wasn't a member of the committee, but sort of snuck my way on into the email chains to get my two cents in, and therefore was a recipient of a lot of the information that was there. And I know that Commissioner Kramer, as in G. Kramer, has been doing a ton of research and following up with information, and Commissioner S. Kramer was able to be able to get some other people with some additional expertise in firearms and Second Amendment. So that concern of yours was well addressed, and quite wholeheartedly, and as a result of that, I think some of the changes that we're looking here this evening may be, you know, a partial byproduct of that. But before your comment, all I was going to say was appreciation for the committee as I became somewhat of a fly on the email wall, throwing my two cents in where I had not been formally invited. And I think that the product that they have brought forth is a good ordinance for the township. I understand the concerns that have been raised by the folks who spoke before us. I do want to make sure you understand, we are not pro-criminal, and I'm sure you didn't really mean that. And so I will support this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernheim. Commissioner Gilbert Kramer?
I would just like to respond to one of my colleagues' concerns about not having been any outreach to any representatives in the community. I did receive an email from Mr. Schmidt and asked him in response if he had any suggestions for improvement to the ordinance, and I did not receive any response.
Thank you. Vice President Gavin?
Thank you, Mr. McCombe, and with all due respect and much respect as due, I'm going to regain control of this meeting, though you have done a wonderful job so far. A couple of comments. Last time while this was in committee, I abstained from voting because we did not have legal counsel here. We now do have legal counsel, so, Mr. Hovey, I'd like to just get your thoughts on the amendments, on the ordinance, and any other response you have to the public comment on this.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity. You know, start, let me make sure, you know, there's a process for adopting ordinance, and it requires it being presented to the public, and, you know, one benefit to that is transparency, the other is to receive feedback and the opportunity to tighten and improve the ordinance before it's finally adopted. And I think that's occurred here. I very much appreciate Mr. Schmidt's feedback and Mr. Abramson's feedback at prior meetings. I did watch the video from the last meeting, you know, that I wasn't present for, and it led to another round of review and research and analysis, you know, related to it led to another round of review and research and analysis, you know, related to the ordinance. And, you know, I think these amendments, the pieces that we removed, sort of addressed the actual operation of the FFL and the keeping of the firearms. We believe we've scaled it back to core zoning principles, which makes it more of a defensible ordinance in the face of a challenge. You know, I think that's the overview of it. I'm happy to answer any specific questions, though, about the amendments or the substance of the ordinance.
Great, thank you, Mr. Hovey. That was it on my comments. Are there any other comments from members of this board? President Sinai.
Thank you, Vice President Gabbard. So just a few things, but the first is, I too wanted to thank and commend the Subcommittee that, in all additions and hangers-on, that worked on this. I think it exemplifies, you know, just how effective this board is with doing things in Subcommittee and really having the opportunity to work very carefully and hard on, you know, what I think otherwise would have been a very, very, I mean, not otherwise, it's a very, very tricky issue, right? It's a subtle, nuanced, and tricky issue, and the group has done a terrific job with support of counsel, and I'm delighted by it, and I'm glad it's part of the board tonight. I'll address Commissioner O'Neil's concern about the committee makeup by echoing what Solicitor Hovey said, which is, you know, the Subcommittee was not made up of anyone other than Commissioners, right? That's what our Subcommittees are. In such a degree that there is public input, it was provided by the public, through public comment and feedback and emails, and that option was available for absolutely everyone. So there was no representative of anyone other than the board representing the township that is on the Subcommittee, and I think that's appropriate, and I think the feedback was appropriately solicited and considered. And then the last is that, you know, I think it's important that municipalities be able to use zoning tools in the furtherance of the best interests of the township, and that's what we're doing here. If you look at the ordinance that we're passing, FFLs are just there next to open-air retail in food and beverage in mixed use, right? It is a use in the township like any other use, and we should treat it like other uses. You know, being mindful to stay clear of the state preemption, and there are really valid and important reasons for being able to do that. And I'm thankful that we are recognizing, just like, you know, various uses show up over time, that, you know, we have these uses, and it should be appropriately treated within our code. Thank you.
Thank you, President Sinai. Are there other comments? All right, seeing none, a motion has been made and seconded, all to authorize the advertising of ordinance, Chapter 155 zoning, federal firearms license. All those in favor, please raise your hand signifying aye. All those opposed? I believe we have two opposed. All right, that motion carries. Thank you. The next item is the adoption of an ordinance, Chapter 121, Stormwater Management and Erosion Control, Amendments to Stormwater Management Provisions. I am going to start this by making a very long motion, I apologize in advance. I will move that we adopt an ordinance to amend the code of the Township of Lower Merion, Chapter 121, Stormwater Management and Erosion Control, to revise its findings and purpose, to revise the definitions for best management practice, impervious surface and wetland, to add definitions for conveyance, come on, evapuh transpiration, green infrastructure, managed release conveyance, again, regulated impervious surface, riparian buffer, stormwater control measure, and stormwater management facility. To impose additional stormwater management requirements to further regulate the discharge of stormwater into adjacent properties, to further regulate the design of stormwater management systems, to impose requirements for and to regulate the use of riparian buffers, to revise the calculation methodology for stormwater runoff, to further regulate the design of infiltration seepage beds, to require the implementation of stormwater quality requirements for post-construction stormwater impacts, to limit permit exceptions for demolitions, to prohibit stormwater discharges into riparian buffers, wetlands, or waters of the Commonwealth, to allow certain discharges of uncontaminated drainage, to require inspection of stormwater management systems and the preparation of an inspection report every three years, and to void stormwater permits issued based on false, misleading, or erroneous information provided by an applicant. This ordinance was authorized for advertisement at a stated meeting of the Board of Commissioners held January 18, 2023, and duly advertised in the March 5, 2023 edition of the Mainline Times and Suburban. Do I have a second?
Second.
Great, thank you very much, Commissioner O'Neil. I'm very disappointed with Passover coming up. No one said Dayenu in between all of those, but we will move on. Is there any comment from the board on this motion? Seeing none. Call this revoked. Do we need a roll call? We do need a roll call. Madam Secretary.
For the adoption of ordinance 4262. Mr. Bernheim.
Aye.
Mr. Churchill.
Yes.
Mr. Courtney.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Aye.
Mr. Grimes.
Yes.
Ms. S. Kramer.
Yes.
Ms. G. Kramer.
Yes.
Mr. McComb.
Yes.
Mr. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil.
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson.
Aye.
Mr. Whalen.
Yes.
Mr. Zella.
Aye.
Mr. Sinai.
Yes.
The ordinance is duly adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Moving on, is there any unfinished business to come before the board? Oh, is there any new business to come before the board? Excellent. President Sinai, I hope you are here for our next meeting because I don't think anyone wants me sharing these anymore, but this meeting is now adjourned.